Hello, this is Commissioner Robinson. I'm on board.
Excellent. Thank you, Commissioner. Welcome.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Commissioner.
Miguel.
Commissioner. Yeah, we're here. Thank you.
Morning.
Judge. I think we need to call Commissioner Robinson in on the side that the judge is on.
Okay.
We are live, Caesar, just to let you know.
Commissioner Robinson, we're going to call you because I believe you're on the wrong side for the recording. We gave you the wrong link. Give us one moment.
Placing the call.
And I see Ryan trying to come in. I don't know if he's been able to come in.
Made it all.
Ryan, are you available?
Yes, I just came on.
Oh, thank you. I saw you trying a couple of times, so.
Hey.
Hi, Ryan.
Thank you. Good to see you.
Thank you, Miguel. I think we're ready.
Okay, go ahead, Caesar. We are live.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Today is Thursday, August 5th, 2021. Commissioners Court is meeting in special open session. It's a joint special meeting with the El Paso County Hospital District. Mr. Gallardo.
Yes, thank you. On our end, welcome to everyone and the Board of Managers of the El Paso County Hospital District is in session, special session with El Paso County Commissioners. And at this point, we'd like to call our meeting to order.
Okay, now this time, Mr. Chair, we'll call our meeting to order. The time is 1:08 PM. And I will be taking a verbal roll call to ensure for the record that we do have a quorum online.
Thank you, Jim.
Mr. Gallardo.
Here, present.
Ms. Martine.
Good afternoon, present.
Dr. Christina Mena.
Present.
Ms. Carmen Arieta Candelaria.
Hello, present.
Dr. Ana Perez.
Present.
Ms. Veronica Carvajal.
Present.
Ms. Karen Dyke. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gallardo, we do have a quorum on our side.
Thank you, Jennifer.
If I could ask for all to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where freedom stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This afternoon, we're joined by ASL interpreters Leslie Joseph and Dario Garcia. Item number three for the County of El Paso is public comment. At this time, we have no members of the public up for speaking on public comment. We'll take no action on item number three. Item number four from our regular agenda, receive a presentation on the El Paso County Hospital District Fiscal Year 2022 Operating and Capital Budgets. And item number five, discuss and take appropriate action on the El Paso County Hospital District's capital and operating budgets for fiscal year 2022 and proposed tax rate.
Caesar, just want to welcome our amazing partners. Getting an echo here. Go ahead, Caesar. I just want to welcome the board. Thank you very much for being here today. You know, as you know, we have an amazing partnership. We have a lot of things in common and a lot of our challenges going forward, so a welcome to a meeting today.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge. Someone else? At this time, I would please have our Mr. Chair Gallardo read our records into items.
Yes, please, Jennifer, if you would.
Agenda item number one, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the fiscal year 2022 El Paso County Hospital District operating and capital budget. Agenda item number two, discuss and take appropriate action regarding the proposed 2021 tax rate for the El Paso County Hospital District.
At this point, do we have our presentation?
Yes. So are we ready for the presentation, Henry?
Yes, please. Proceed.
So, thank you, board members, judge, and commissioners. We're going to be presenting our proposed fiscal year 22 operating and capital budget. As you know, there's been a resurgence with COVID lately. Read today that about 94% of the COVID-19 cases in our region are part of the Delta variant. And despite the fact that it's growing through our central Texas area, Louisiana, Oklahoma, and other areas, El Paso thus far has been somewhat spared. There's been over a 500% increase in admissions related to COVID in Texas, but it's been relatively flat here in El Paso. We believe in part due to the high vaccination rate and the efforts all entities went through in trying to get our population vaccinated. We do worry that in the next two to three weeks, we may see the surge catch up to us either because of the travel going on within the state or as other cities within the state seek help in terms of additional beds that we may have available. So hospitals are getting together to make sure that we're prepared in terms of PPE, vaccination doses, and testing capabilities. Having gone through all that, just as a preface to what we're facing today. And as you know, I was fortunate to be invited and attend the August 3rd, the second year memorial at Ascot Attic. And I was really impressed with the work done in terms of the monument of the wall that was established for those victims. It was very, very well done and very touching. So these are the kinds of things that, you know, your healthcare organization faces either when something tragic happens like the August 3rd shootings or when we're, you know, the fighting of this global pandemic, COVID-19. Nonetheless, we still operate as a regular hospital. We still get trauma patients coming in. We still have moms delivering babies. We still have, you know, all the other things that are part and parcel to a healthcare system that also go on without interruption. So hopefully, you know, our presentation today will give a reflection of some of the challenges we face next year with some items related to COVID-19 and its impact on funding, as well as other areas of concern such as governmental programs through CMS and the state that are also going through some changes to give you an idea as to the kinds of challenges healthcare sees every year. With that, I'll pass it over to my CFO, Michael Nunez.
Good afternoon, everyone. Michael Nunez, District Chief Financial Officer for the El Paso County Hospital District. I'll be going through the PowerPoint presentation. There is another document that does include the word summary and then also Excel files that does have the various financial statements for UMC, El Paso Health, El Paso Children, the foundation, and also UMC of El Paso Healthcare. So on slide, let me start off on slide number two. Next slide. Now here, I think we'll be discussing later, now this was prepared last week where we initially thought on Monday, August 2nd, the Commissioner Court was going to be presenting the no new tax revenue and the voter approved tax rates, but that's going to be happening this afternoon. So the only question that we will have later on this afternoon is what is the scheduled date for the court to introduce and propose their current tax rate? Because I do believe that any tax hearing on the tax rate is currently scheduled for Monday, August 23rd. Let me go through then to slide number four. Let me give an update on our rating agency scores. This has not changed. So was it for several months with Fitch Ratings? We maintained an A minus positive outlook rating. Last October 2020, the outlook was upgraded from stable to positive. With Standard and Poor's, we currently have a triple B plus rating with a stable outlook. And last September 2020, the outlook was upgraded from negative to stable. And on Moody's, we have not been, we have not had a ratings call with them since December of 2019. And their latest rating on the hospital district is B double A two with a negative outlook. I do have an update on Standard and Poor's. We currently do have our upcoming ratings call. It's currently right now scheduled for either Monday, August 30th or Wednesday, September the 1st. Depending upon whether the court may have an agenda item to approve our budget on Monday, the 30th. If not, then it will be rescheduled for Wednesday, September 1st. Next slide. Let me give an update on where the hospital district is currently through June. Now currently, right now, the hospital district has had an increase in net position of about 58 million compared to a budget of about 1.7 for about a $56 million positive variance. You'll see the increase in net position for each of the entities. UMC is about 26 million. El Paso Health, 15 million, and El Paso Children's about 16 million. Now, most of the positive increase in net assets is attributed to the CARES Act funding that both UMC and El Paso Children's receive and has recognized as revenue in our financial statement. Now, the forecast we have for the 12 months ended September 30th. We do forecast that district-wide, where we currently are, about 58 million. We do forecast that the hospital district will be up about 50 million positive increase in net assets with the decreases currently right now. UMC going from about 26 million to about 21 million. And El Paso Children's from 15 million to about 13 million. Next slide. On page six is the district's performance to prior year, which was 2020. You'll see currently right now at the top, there is about a $21 million positive variance compared to previous years. We do expect that to be about 19 to 20 million once we get to September 30th. Again, with the forecast being 50 million for the district-wide for 2021. Last year, the district came in at a positive 31 million increase in net position. Next slide, slide seven. A look at the district days cash on hand. The red line does represent our current year days cash on hand. You'll see that in March, we did peak at about 101 days cash on hand, which is right after we had received virtually 95% of our property tax revenue. And then we had received a Medicaid supplemental payment during the month of March. We currently are at 79 days cash on hand. I do forecast that the district will end up about 79 to 80 days cash on hand as of September 30th, 2021. And with the budget that we currently have, I do project that the district days cash on hand will be about 57 days days cash on hand at September 30th of 2022. It does, from a district perspective, it's about a 2.7 to 2.8 million dollars cash operating expense today to operate the hospital district. Next slide, slide eight. Is our district current ratio, which measures our current assets compared to our current liabilities. You'll see as of June of 2021, we are at 1.46, which is very healthy. And you'll see in the yellow or orange line starting with 2020 that our current ratio started to increase last June, hitting about 1.3, and we've been at that 1.4 to 1.5 range. Again, this is a very healthy ratio to have. Now, I want to, the next various slides are going to be talking about how the operations have been in 2021. I do want to exhibit, there's about three slides which will show the difference between the operations from 2021 for UMC, El Paso Children's, and El Paso Health, and what we expect for 2022. So if you can turn to slide 10. And slide 10 is, next one. This is our average daily census for UMC and for El Paso Children. Beginning with the left with UMC, you'll see on the red line that since December, we have averaged anywhere from 260 to about 280 average daily census, well above historical averages where we were closer to about between 210 to 220. Our average daily census for 2021 is 275. Now, when the budget was prepared during the midst of May and June and without the Delta variant being so pervasive in other parts of the country and also with the expectation of the federal emergency declaration ending by the end of this calendar year and as well as the state emergency declaration, our budget for 2022 on the UMC side was budgeted to have an average daily census of 225. So with less inpatient volume, that was going to generate less inpatient revenues as well. El Paso Children's, now the pediatric volume has been very different than the adult volume when the pandemic hit last March and April. For the most part, on the pediatric side, their average daily census has hovered around the mid 40s, well below their historical averages of between 50 to 60. Now, they have had a recent spike in their average daily census of April, May, and June, where they've been between 60 and 67. Their average daily census for 2021 is 50, whereas their budget for next year was based upon that the pediatric volume was going to rebound. So their average daily census for next year is 57. Expect to have a rebound in patient revenue services in 2022 than they experienced in 2021. Next slide on page 11. This is a look at the hospital's average case mix index during the pandemic for both UMC and El Paso Children. Now, this is a measure of the patient acuity, so the higher the number, the sicker the patients are. And you'll see that both for UMC and El Paso Children during the pandemic, our average case mix index has been historically higher than what we normally run. On the UMC side, although it's been, it has been declining since December, we're still operating at 1.63. We normally operate between 1.3 to 1.4. And El Paso Children's, they also have been high. They've been averaging about 1.5 in recent months. They've been about 1.7, 1.6, and then in June, they jumped up back to 1.94. Next slide. And talking about the average length of stay, the higher the acuity normally means that the patients are having a longer length of stay at UMC and El Paso Children's. You'll see that on the UMC side on the left-hand part of the slide, our average length of stay has been about six, well above our historical averages of about 4.8. And then El Paso Children's, you'll see that they've also have been experiencing higher length of stay than what they historically average. Now, if you can turn to slide 24, I do want to now talk about El Paso Health. Now, El Paso Health, you'll see that the state program membership, and if you look at the orange line, which represents fiscal year 20, when the pandemic started beginning in May and which coincided with the federal emergency declaration, Medicaid membership has grown each and every month for El Paso Health. And this is because of the federal emergency declaration and the no disenrollment initiative by Health and Human Services. So with that, the El Paso Health Medicaid membership has grown about 21,000 members since the pandemic started. Now, when we were making our budget projections for fiscal year 2022, this was based upon the industry analyst predicting that the federal emergency declaration would end at the end of the calendar year 2021. And immediately thereafter, Health and Human Services was projecting an initial 50% reduction in Medicaid members to occur in February of 2022. And then relatively thereafter, was it for the next nine months? So for El Paso Health, the pre-pandemic Medicaid membership was around 68,000. So that's what we have budgeted for in fiscal year 2022. So in their case, when you look at premium revenue, less members, meaning less revenue as well. So those are the major factors when we're looking at our 2021 operation as to how the 2022 budgets have been prepared. If I may, I'd like to go ahead and turn to slide 30 and talk about some of the uncertainties and challenges that the hospital district is facing during our fiscal year 2022 budget. Want to talk about the federal emergency declaration. This currently does run through October 18th of 2021. Now, this can be extended in 90-day increments. It is expected currently right now, even with the onset of the Delta variant, that when October 18th rolls around, that the federal declaration will continue for at least another 90 days. Further than that, we do not know. So this budget is just predicated that the federal emergency declaration will end on December 31st. Now, how that does impact the hospitals and also El Paso Health is first on this thing called Federal Medical Assistance Program, otherwise known as FMAP. For all our Medicaid supplemental programs, we do receive the benefit of additional federal funding regarding the state Medicaid supplemental programs. So the state, so the federal government will pick up an extra six cents of the dollar in the Medicaid supplemental program. So right now, the 2021 enhanced FMAP is about 68%. And the 2022 regular FMAP, as published, is already at 61%. So the difference between the 68% and the 61% is about $7 million annually. We are projecting that we are going to only have one more quarter of the enhanced FMAP, meaning that UMC's intergovernmental transfer cost for these Medicaid supplemental programs will be about $4 to $5 million higher in 2022. Next slide. On the Medicaid membership, as I mentioned earlier, with the federal emergency declaration and the no disenrollment initiative by Health and Human Services Commission, and assuming that the federal declaration ends at the end of the calendar year 2021, that the El Paso Health membership will start decreasing February 1, 2022, and relatively afterward. This alone is about a $7 million revenue decrease just as a drop in Medicaid membership for El Paso Health. On the UMC side, one of our Medicaid supplemental programs that is tied directly to Medicaid membership is the Network Access Improvement Program, otherwise known as NAIP. With the Medicaid membership decrease projected, our UMC's revenue for this NAIP program will decrease about $3 million in 2022. Next slide. On the state emergency declaration on slide 32. Now, Governor, when this was prepared, Governor Abbott had just issued to renew the state emergency declaration on July 1st. That has been since renewed August 1st. And the state emergency declaration runs in a 30-day increment as opposed to the federal emergency declaration that is for 90 days. Now, how this is going to impact is that once the state's emergency declaration ends, all Texas hospitals have been operating off-site locations to help with the pandemic. Currently, the benefit, those off-site locations are being reimbursed as if those services were being performed on the main campus. But once the state emergency declaration ends, then those off-site locations will need to be relicensed as an off-site facility, and there is lower reimbursement for that. So we have built into the budget as well that particularly for the Mesa Ambulatory Surgical Center, the current procedures that are being done right now are benefiting from better hospital reimbursement rates. But once the state's emergency declaration ends, then that will be reimbursed at ambulatory surgical rates, which is lower. On slide 33. On our CMS Medicare Advanced Payment Program. Now, last year, when the pandemic started, CMS offered this program to hospitals to help with their lost revenues because during the month of April and May, hospitals were required to shut down their elective surgeries and only do emergent surgeries. So with that, CMS provided this Medicare Advanced Payment Program. It's basically a six-month Medicare advance. UMC received $30 million in April of 2020, but the recruitment plan, which has already begun, so beginning April 2021 through February of 2022.
Standby, please.
Okay, go ahead.
Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. CMS will re- There's an echo. We're still getting an echo.
Okay, just a second. Can we get a mic check, please?
Okay. Beginning on slide 33 with the recruitment plan, beginning April 2021 through February 2022, CMS will reimburse hospitals at 75% of the Medicare revenues billed. So for UMC, that's about $1,250,000 per month. Then, beginning March of 2022 through August of 2022, CMS will reimburse hospitals at 50% of Medicare revenues billed. That's about a $2.5 million monthly impact to UMC. And then, if there's any balance remaining, would be due September of 2022. So the recruitment has begun in April of 2021, 421,000 in April, $1,203,000 in May, $1,200,000 in June. So UMC will pay approximately, or be recouped approximately $7 million in fiscal 2021, and then the remaining $23 million will be recouped in fiscal year 2022. And that's one of the main reasons as to why UMC's cash position will be decreasing from 2021 to 2022. On page 34, slide 34, talking about the CARES Act revenue. Now, for both UMC and for El Paso Children, through June 30th of 2021, both hospitals have fully recognized as revenue, either by COVID-19 expenses or COVID-19 lost revenues, so there's no deferred revenue remaining, nor is there any risk of any of the hospitals having to return any of the CARES Act funding back to Health and Human Services. So UMC has recognized, we did receive 42 million, and have recognized 42 million in our financial statement, and UMC recognized in full back in April. El Paso Children's recognized in full their 21 million in June. On slide 35. One of the items, and now that we are only about 35 days away from the start of the new state fiscal year, is CMS has yet to approve the Medicaid financing that is set to begin September 1st of 2021. Historically, CMS does approve these, was it the Medicaid financing rate by July 15th, but right now, the industry, the managed care organizations are walking their neckshells right now to see what's going to happen if, in the event, CMS does not approve the rate that is supposed to set forth here in about 30 days from now. At one of the last Medicaid hospital payment advisory committee meetings I attended three months ago, I had asked if Health and Human Services had a backup plan in the event that CMS does not approve the rate, and currently right now, there is no backup plan by HHSC. So this is one of the biggest uncertainties we currently have right now. On slide 36. Talking about the Medicaid 1115 waiver. Now, this was initially approved back in 2011. It had received an extension, 10-year extension, and does expire currently September 30th of 2022. Now, in January of 2021, earlier this year, CMS had approved a 10-year extension through 2030, and there were new directed payment programs that were going to be vital as the DISRIP and the NAIP programs come to an end. The DISRIP program ends September 30th of 2021. This is about a $35 million annual benefit to UMC. And then, the NAIP program ends on September 30th of 2027, and that's currently is about a $15 million annual benefit to UMC. Now, in April of 2021, CMS had rescinded the previously approved 10-year extension, and one of the reasons that was cited was CMS had felt that Health and Human Services had not gone through its proper public comment period in adopting this new extension request. So during the month of June, Health and Human Services did go through a public comment period, and on July 16th, Health and Human Services resubmitted to CMS a 10-year extension of the Medicaid 1115 waiver. Slide 37. Now, with the new waiver request or the extension request, existing programs such as the Uncomp Setic Care Program, the Quality and Sensive Payment Program will continue. The programs that are being phased out, as I mentioned earlier, are the DISRIP programs. It's about $2.49 billion statewide, and then also the Network Access Improvement Program. But what is vital with the transition to new programs are going to be the Comprehensive Hospital Increased Reimbursement Program, otherwise known as TIRP, which is $5 billion a year. And then, there are two other programs, the Texas Incentive for Physicians and Professional Services, and the Rural Access to Primary and Preventive Services. Now, again, right now, these programs are contingent upon the CMS approving these rates starting September 1 of 2021. On slide 38, just wanted just to mention this, although this is a couple of years away. On the Medicaid Disproportionate Share Programs, what is currently scheduled are the federal disproportionate share program cuts. Now, back in 2014, to pay for the Affordable Care Act, there was going to be federal dish cuts to hospitals beginning back in 2014, but it's been delayed several times, and most recently in December of 2020. The reductions are now set at $8 billion per year from federal fiscal year 2024 through federal fiscal year 2027. So what this means to Texas is about a $400 million impact to Texas, or about a 20% reduction of dish funding, and what this would mean to UMC currently right now would be about $3 to $4 million annual decrease to UMC. On slide 39. Kind of shifting gears now to talk about the TCDRS Retirement Program. Now, one of the key things here is that the measurement date of what we call the Governmental Accounting Standard, Board Number 60 Evaluation Report versus the actual year-end, is that this does have a December 31 measurement date versus our September 30 financial reporting date. But the funded ratio, we'll see at the December 31, 2020, was about 89%. Calendar year 2020 had about a 10.5% investment return. December 31, 2019, 92% funded ratio, and December 31, 2018, about 85% funded ratio. All the ratios do signify that UMC's retirement program is well-funded. Now, the cash contribution percentage is going to change in 2022. Right now, the funding percentage is 7.57% of covered payroll. That's going to increase to 8.21% in 2022. On slide 40. Talking about El Paso Health, and Janelle will be joining me here in just a second, but some other budget challenges, uncertainties. I talked about the new Medicaid directed payment programs that are supposed to start September 1st. However, CMS has still yet to approve these new rates starting September 1st. There are non-emergent medical transportation services that began June 1st. This used to be run by the state, now it's going to be transferred over to the managed care organizations. We talked about the COVID-19 federal emergency declaration, that once that ends, the expected decrease in the Medicaid membership for El Paso Health. And then, also, El Paso Health starts to venture into the Medicare lines of business, and that is one of the things that we have built into the 2022 budget, is in preparation for those programs, as well as STAR Plus, when those programs kick into gear in 2023. Janelle, at this time, would you like to add any additional comments regarding El Paso Health?
Yes, thank you. One of the trends that we are going to be monitoring, given the emergency declaration, is that increase in medical costs. With children returning to in-person learning, we're going to be paying very close attention to our emergency room visits, and any of those visits that could have been prevented by taking place in an outpatient setting. And as far as Medicare, what the engagement is a due diligence in order to make sure that we align product offerings that are favorable to the El Paso market.
Thank you, Janelle. Next slide, and slide 41. Talking about El Paso Children, and Cindy will be joining me here in just a second. But in terms of their major uncertainty is what's happening with the pediatric volume. Now, the last three months, we have seen a surge in their inpatient and outpatient activity, but much remains to be seen as to whether that's going to be sustained. Also, a large percentage of their 2022 inpatient growth is specifically tied to a pediatric intensive care strategy, and then they also continue to face capacity challenges specifically for specialty clinics and outpatient services, and then the, was it the discussion of the timing as to when the eighth floor buildout is going to happen on the Women's and Children's Tower. On an intercompany note, glad to report that El Paso Children still continues to meet their monthly line of credit payments. These are scheduled to end around the middle of fiscal year 2024, and thereafter is when El Paso Children will start to pay UMC back on the large debt. Cindy, would you like to add any comments regarding El Paso Children?
Thank you, Michael. Good afternoon. A couple of things just to call to your attention regarding the pediatric volumes. We're really slightly lower than we typically should run within a summer month. However, we know that as this week, as the school districts have opened back up, we're carefully monitoring that activity. We are starting to see a slight increase related to a different respiratory virus. We call that RSV. It's not uncommon, especially in the winter months, however, we are seeing it a little bit earlier than usual, but not to the extent that other Texas cities are seeing that. I've spoken with several CEOs throughout the state, and they literally have had such large increases of that volume that they have no capacity in terms of pediatric beds. We're not seeing that here in El Paso so far, but again, we're closely monitoring that. Another component with the PICU strategy, really what we're doing here is really trying to move forward with making sure that the complex cases are able to be accomplished here within the city at El Paso Children. So again, as you all are aware, we focus very carefully on a neurosurgery perspective. We're going to continue to work on trying to close that gap with the cardiac complex care. But with that being said, is that as volumes quickly return back to normal, as we would expect, then we'll continue to have those capacity challenges that we've spoken with you all about. So we need to start thinking forward in the future as to how we're going to really plan for better spacing.
Thank you, Cindy. Next slide, and slide 42. Illustratively, this is the fiscal year net position change for the hospital district. You'll see back in 2018, we're $31 million decrease in net position, followed by $11 million decrease in net position in 2019. In 2020, that was about a $31 million increase in net position. We do forecast $50 million for 2021. And then, for the 2022 budget, virtually a break-even budget. We're coming in probably about $172,000 district-wide. On slide 43. Looking at the individual components of the hospital district, you'll see UMC, about an $11 million decrease in net position, El Paso Health, 3.7, and El Paso Children's about 7.4 million. Those are the larger component units bringing up the hospital district net position. Now, I do show at the bottom the impact of the non-cash depreciation expense of about $41 million. So positive cash flow from operations or earnings before depreciation expense will be about $41 million for fiscal year 2022. Next slide, slide 44. And looking at the cash forecast, what I had mentioned this earlier, now this does break out by each of the individual component units of the hospital district. The forecasted unrestricted cash September 30th of 2021 combined is about $223 million, or about 79 to 80 days cash on hand. And down at the bottom of the page, once after the cash flow from operations, the cash flows to be used for financing activities and investing activities, we do forecast that the unrestricted cash will be about $160 million at September 30th of 2022, or representing about 57 days cash on hand. Next slide, 45. This is just illustratively showing the growth of the hospital district in terms of its revenue budget and expense budget. You'll see we're about $740 million expense budget back in 2018, now we're well over $1 billion, for the first time that we will be presenting a budget that exceeds $1 billion. That's about a 43% increase from 2018. On page, slide 46. Look at the components of our revenue budget. You'll see our net patient service revenue from UMC and El Paso Children, about $493 million, or 47%. Premium revenue from El Paso Health, $252 million, or 24%. Our Medicaid supplemental revenue programs, 118, 11%, and then our estimated property tax revenue of $132 million, or 12%. Next slide, 47. Look at our expense budget. And the larger components you'll see, I'm going to concentrate on the top four, but you'll see salaries and wages of $346 million, or about 33% of our expense budget, followed by medical claims of $213 million, or 20%, and these are the medical claims El Paso Health pays out to its providers, hospitals, and also doctors. Supplies and pharmaceuticals, $172 million, 16%, and physician fees, $116 million, or about 11%. On slide 48. Just going to hit upon a few items on UMC's significant revenue assumptions before I talk about our property tax revenue increase. But you'll see overall that UMC is expecting a net patient service revenue decrease of about $13 million from 2021, and a large portion of that is due to the top two items. In 2021, we, UMC did receive about $23 million in reimbursement for COVID-uninsured patients. We are not expecting that to continue in 2022, and then, as I mentioned earlier, our average daily census of 225 in 2022 compared to, right now, we are averaging 275 in 2021. On slide 49, want to talk about our property tax rate scenarios. Now, these are based upon the final certified value that we received right at the end of July from the Central Appraisal District. And going from left to right, now in fiscal year 2021, as adopted, you'll see the total taxable value of the properties was about $46.7 billion, with a tax rate of 26.7 cents that generated property tax revenue of about $125 million. Now, we move on to the 2022 tax rate scenarios. Now, you'll see first off that the total taxable value is now $49.5 billion, or almost a 6% increase from last year. Now, with the no-new revenue rate, the no-new revenue rate would drop to 25.8 cents, which would generate about property tax revenue of about $127 million, or about a $2.7 million increase from current year, but most of that relates to new properties and improvement, which makes up about 90% of the expected dollar increase of 2.8 million. Now, on, what this budget is predicated upon is staying at the same tax rate as in 2021, or 26.7 cents. And in the middle column, you'll see that the expected property tax revenue will be about $132.5 million, or about a $7.5 million increase in 2022 compared to 2021. And at the bottom of the page, you'll see the average home value was $136,600 last year. It's now $146,600 last year. So you'll see that adopting the same tax rate would be an annual increase of about $392 under the same tax rate, which would be to about the annual change of about $26, or about $2 per month. Now, do we want to have, now I've got maybe about three or four slides to go over. We can talk about those before we get back to the property tax revenue discussion. I guess I'll take lead from the commissioners and see whether we want to have that discussion now.
Judge, your opinion, Judge?
Commissioners, any comments, any questions at this point? We have none? Go ahead, Michael.
Judge, I might have some questions, but I'll just wait until the full, until we finish the full presentation, and then, and then, I'll ask questions. Thanks.
Okay, we'll do that. Yes, and I've got about, I think there's about five more slides that I want to go over. Okay. On slide 50. Now, this is off of last year's tax rates. This is just, this is depicting off the tax bill as to the various taxing entities. You'll see that the schools are at 42%, the City of El Paso is at 29%, El Paso County about 16%, the Community College, 4.5%, and UMC El Paso, right under 9%. This is based upon- This is based upon last year's adopted tax rate. On Slide 51, one of the measures that we look at since UMC is a is a safety net hospital is we compare what our estimated uncompensated care costs, not charges, but what it costs to provide uncompensated care to the maintenance and operations component of our property tax revenue. From a percentage standpoint, it doesn't change much every year. It's about 46 to 47% of our estimated uncompensated care cost is covered by the MNO portion of property tax revenue and 50 to 354% is uncovered. In 2022, we are projecting that our estimated uncompensated care cost will be 233 million. 109 million will will be covered by the MNO portion of property tax revenue. And the remaining 125 million is what the hospital district needs to recover in the next fiscal year just to break even. So again, it's a five-year comparison, but the percentages do not change much from 2018 through 2022. We can move to slide, next slide 52. Now, this is the next two slides will be talking about UMC El Paso only. The the one on the left is showing what our forecast is for 2021 compared to the budget. And the two the two or three items that I do want to emphasize, you'll see that our patient service revenue is about 371 million or 51%. And property tax revenue is 128 million or 18%. Other revenue, which does include the CARES Act funding revenue, is about 110 million or 15%. You'll see when you look at the the pie on the right that the other revenue will be dropping down to 69 million or 10%. And the reduction is simply because the CARES Act revenue was included in 2021 and is not in 2022. The next slide on 53. This is taken from the audited financial statements for the large five public Texas hospitals. And this represents only the hospital only and does not include other component units such as a health plan or a children's hospital. But you'll see now, now, these are 2020 audited financial statements. There are two of them that have a different fiscal year end. Harris Health has a February 28 year end and University Health has a December 31st year end. UMC, 591 million revenue budget, 48% comes from patient service revenue, which is the blue piece of the pie. And property tax revenue, the gray piece is about 21%. Harris Health System in Houston, you'll see their patient service revenue is 34%. Their property tax revenue is 45% of their hospital revenue budget. JPS Health Network in Fort Worth, their patient service revenue, 460 million, 36%. And their property tax revenue, there's a typo there, you can see that right now. But it's about 36% in terms of the in terms of their property tax revenue. University Health Systems, of their of their total revenue, patient service revenue of a billion or about 56%. And their property tax revenue is 25%. And Parkland in Dallas, their patient service revenue is 44% of the revenue budget. And their property tax revenue is 27%. On Slide 54, one of the items when we're talking about our property tax revenue is one of the significant significant expense assumptions for UMC. And the one of the largest is going to be salaries and wages. We expect to have be about an $11 million increase from 2021. And the components of we are setting aside $6 million to address the current nursing shortage we have simply from the standpoint when the pandemic began and ensued is a lot of the a lot of the nurses, not only here in El Paso, but statewide and also nationwide, became traveling nurses and were getting paid much more. So our reliance on contract labor for nurses has been very significant in the past couple of months. Also, we are proposing to increase the minimum wage from 11 to $13, keeping in mind that we had we had delayed the dollar per year increase this year in 2021 because of the pandemic uncertainty. If annual cost is about $12 million, which also does address salary compression issues. We do have a plan to implement this July 1 of 2022, which is the fourth quarter and does bring a price tag of about 2.5 million. And then we also have a planned 1% merit beginning December of 2021 with about $1.8 million cost. Now, one of the biggest uncertainties that we still continue to address in purchase services is contract labor. Now, you'll see there's about a 48 million dollar contract labor decrease. Now, historically, we do pre-pandemic, UMC would spend about $500,000 to $600,000 a month on contract labor. But as recent as April, May, and June, we have now it's about $6.5 to $7 million, $7 million a month just in contract labor. We do have concerted efforts to try to hire back some of the nurses. But this will continue to be one of the biggest challenges that the the hospital industry, not only UMC, faces. On the only other things I wanted to go over on page 59, our routine capital budget for the hospital district is now on the UMC side, historically, UMC's capital budget has been roughly maybe 12, 10, 12, 15 million dollars a year. And one of the things I was because of the of the the balancing of the of the cash needs with El Paso Children's, also with the with the capital needs for the entire district. But now the hospital district is doing better financially. Our UMC's routine routine capital depreciation expense is about $18 million a year. So that that should be the bare minimum that a hospital should be spending on its routine capital. We are playing catch up now from the previous couple of years that that we did not meet this level. So UMC's routine capital budget is 23 million this year. El Paso Children's has a proposed $5.3 million capital budget, of which $1 million is anticipated to be coming from from foundation funding. And El Paso Health, 1.9 million for a total district routine capital budget of 30.2 million dollars. That that concludes the high point of the 2022 hospital district budget. So I want to open it up for discussions. And I imagine one of the first items we'll be talking about will be back on Slide 49, which is the property tax rate scenario.
Judge. Commissioner Stout, you want to go ahead and on your questions now?
Yeah, I was I was wondering. First of all, let me go back to my notes here. Does does the this is does the salary and wages that you have budgeted, does that include, for example, things like hazard pay or paid differentials for for folks that work in COVID units? Working directly with COVID pay COVID patients?
We have had premium pay for COVID-related cases. That may not be included to the level it was in this fiscal year, given that the the basis of the budget is that COVID was on the downswing. But, you know, that would probably continue as needed if COVID continues to grow. Right now, as you know, we've had a slight increase in El Paso, but so far it's been a little flat. But clearly, if it were to if we were experiencing El Paso surge is what's happening in central Texas and other areas, those are those are tools we would use to encourage staff to work in any COVID unit. And Commissioner, this is Michael. So what we what we assess at the beginning of each quarter are some of these premium pay, COVID pay, retention bonuses that we're doing. We assess these at the beginning of each quarter. So like currently back at early July, those we we made this, we made the decision to continue those programs for the months of July, August, September. As we get to September, then we will reassess what the COVID situation is and see whether those programs continue for the following quarter.
That's right. And what we're currently addressing, as Michael pointed out during the presentation, is the nursing shortage as it relates to contract labor. So when we talked about earlier, the $6 million, and we're very focused on respiratory therapists. We're very focused on the nursing and critical care area. So that's how we address very pretty much on a quarterly basis.
And in fact, thank you, Letty, on but on that one item alone, we we had a planned October 1 start, but we made the decision to go ahead and implement that, I think, this pay period that just started. So those costs are now being incurred during August and September when the original plan was started in in October.
Can you can you tell me, I was looking at the, you know, the pie chart on on the, you know, division of 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 expenses and and it showed that physician fees was about, I think, 11%. How much how much have physician fees increased over the the past few budget cycles? And and, you know, if it have if they have increased, what what is that attributable to?
On if you're referring to Slide 47, on the on the physician fees, now, this is both combined for UMC and El Paso Children. Now, what the fee increases every year, one are going to be based upon contractual arrangements or any type of a CPI increases. But also, and I I do believe in Cindy, you might need to help me out with this. But I think on the pediatric side, there are some planned planned physician recruitment. Think that is listed on Slide 57, where we've got the the pediatric intensive care initiative and then also new specialists in neurology, ear, nose, and throat, and also dermatology. Cindy, can you comment any further regarding El Paso Children's?
I think you hit it on the head. It's really about bringing some more specialists on board, and so that accounts for that increase there, at least on the children's side.
And let me add to that, Commissioner Stout, this is Letty. So when I look specifically at UMC and I look at the trend, the the five-year history, looking at UMC's trajectory from 2018 to current, there is quite an increase. Now, if you remember, we in 2018, we were spending somewhere around 30 million just for that single line where we are now at 96 million. We did have quite a transition with our partnership with what we called our private UPL program. So if you if you look at that straight line item, there is the expenses that were borne back by UMC. So that line item over time, we have had to spend dollar for dollar over that course of of time now up over $60 million because that level of funding with our partner has gone up. So it's quite significant.
And you bring up a good point. When we had the El Paso County Clinical Services where we were paying about 60% if I recall of the salaries and then the partnership would cover the other 40%, that program expired. So now we're paying a full 100% and that happened a couple of years ago. So that was a major cause of increase in this. I believe it includes the Texas Tech agreement. And as you know, they've acquired some really strong specialists to assist our community. We also look at the residency and fellowship program. We in that number is also included pediatric neurosurgeon. And so in the next fiscal year, we're also adding a second pediatric neurosurgeon. So these are highly skilled physicians that we're acquiring to be able to meet the community needs. Commissioner Stout, this is Michael. On tab two of the of the document and also page two of tab two, I'll read your district-wide numbers. Our physician fees expense in 2020 was about 108 million. We are expecting that in 2021, the physician fees will be about 110 million. And then in 2022, to be about 116 million. So those are total both for UMC and El Paso Children, at least for the last the last three fiscal years.
Okay, so so I've also I've heard in the past, you know, conversation about, you know, when we when we, you know, I guess when these physician fees are going up and, you know, it's, you know, we're bringing in new, I guess, lines of service and new doctors and things like that. What's the what's the correlation or what are we seeing on the revenue side then from, you know, if we're investing $60 million more in in patients and and I'm sorry, physician fees since, you know, 2018? Are we are we actually seeing a correlational increase in revenue that that, you know, I've been told should should be taking place?
So, so, okay, this is Michael. So just to correlate, just to was it just to make sure that we're that we're clear on this? Now, yes, when you look at them on tab two, and if you're looking at the physician fees expense of about 48 million and now it's 116 million. Now, keep in mind that because of the the what we call the private upper limit payment program we had with the with the private hospital, 47 million represented the the contract value that that UMC had paid on a contract basis. But if you were to look at down below, there's an intragovernmental transfer expense of about 40 million because UMC, if you remember back then, we were putting up the IGT cost for the separate entity was paying those contracts. So you would need to combine those two expense lines, put it together so you can get more of an apple than apples dollar comparison. So in 19, back in 2018, you take your physician fees of 47.8 million and your intragovernmental transfer expense of almost 41 million, that gets you to about 89 million when you're comparing more dollars and dollars, apples to apples. Now, when you're looking, yeah, you are correct from a standpoint of now that when we have new physicians coming to, you know, coming here, you'll see that our patient service revenues, you'll see district wide, back in 2018, we were about 304 million. That jumped up to 360 million in 2019. That jumped and increased another 28 million in 2020. And then from 2020 to 21, almost a $90 million increase in patient service revenue. That's strictly revenues, but then you have to, you know, consider, you know, the physician fees expense, the salaries expense of of the nurses and staff, and then also the medical supplies expense. So there is a direct correlation with physician fees expense increase with net patient service revenue increase.
And Commissioner, let me add to to your point of view. As we're adding new doctors, we also do a service line analysis where we analyze the the net patient revenue. And certainly for budget purposes, we do that very closely as well. Some of the reasons we had we had doctors, of course, is to bring the services to the community. And as we're doing that, we analyze the infrastructures that we have in place to bring them in. And there's a ramp up process as we add the new physicians to make them known, to integrate them into our system. So it is very possible that when they first come in, that they're not going to make money. But as we move them forward and integrate them well, the business is going to become busy, right? So so that's what we're looking at. So it depends on which which specialist you're asking on versus others. So I we do have the analysis of how that is progressing. And so the the growth that we're expecting is targeted specifically for certain key areas that we know are are going to drive increases in the business and business drivers to balance those other areas that perhaps perhaps are not making as much money but are definitely necessary for our community, if that makes sense.
And our patient revenue from 2018 to 2022 budget shows an increase of about 189 million dollars. So more than compensates for the increase in physician expense. This is Michael. If I may, just one more comment on that. Now, I do, there's not a slide in the PowerPoint presentation, but perhaps I should bring one up, talking about our payer mix. Now, in the Word document, in the in the second section of of tab one, and it's on page 17, we do show a five-year comparison of UMC's payer mix. Whereas back in 2018, our funded percentage was about 63%. Our unfunded was 37%. Where we currently are and where we project is that for 2022, that the funded percentage will increase to 66% and the unfunded is about 34%. Now, this is only going back five years, but even going back to when I started back in 2005, I think our unfunded was about 52% and our funded was only 48%. So that's a that's probably an illustration that I that I should be able to show is what the hospital district has done from its funded unfunded ratio going back over the last 15 years.
Okay, I appreciate that that further information. On on another another subject, I was I was just wondering, how do we, how does UMC deal with 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 Medicaid denials? On, on another, um, another subject, I was, I was just wondering, how, how do we, um, how does UMC deal with, with, with Medicaid denials? And, and are we doing anything to try to, to increase Medicaid reimbursements? Um, you know, could we be getting more if we help people sign up for Medicaid, for example? Or, or, you know, could we do more to, to appeal denials? Um, can, can you elaborate a little bit on, on, on that topic?
Yes, absolutely. This is Michael. So when we talk about the Medicaid payment, uh, you know, there are, there are the two components, the rate component and then the volume component. Uh, the rate component, now those are pretty much predicated, at least on the, on the traditional Medicaid side, by the state. On the Medicaid managed care, now that is based upon the contractual, uh, agreement for the managed care contract, uh, contracts that we have with the payers. In fact, right now, we are, we are right in the midst of renegotiate. UMC is in the midst of renegotiating all of its managed care contract payers, and we've been doing this probably over the last six months. El Paso Children's did this probably about, I want to say maybe two years ago. Now, to address the Medicaid denial, yes, we, yes, we work with a couple of vendors to help us. One from a, uh, to qualify people that come in as self-pay. Uh, we try to get the, all the information we can so that we can get them qualified for Medicaid. Uh, and we've been doing that, uh, you know, for, you know, wasn't it for many, many years? So, so we do that vigorously to try to, try to get these people that come in as self-pay to get them qualified under, under Medicaid.
Yeah, and, and we don't stop there, Commissioner. Uh, as, as we move forward with the system's implementation, we're, we're always looking for process improvement. So we do have, uh, as of right now, consultants in, in our house analyzing how we do things systematically, as well as our own processes. So we're evaluating what the system is generating with them, and how we're gonna improve the denial process uh, to reinvent what we have with our own team and best practices.
And I'll tell you that in terms of denials, uh, whenever those come in, we work with the payer to make sure that we provide the, any, any documentation they need. Sometimes they may have a question related to the documentation that allows us then to follow up with the physician of record to look at the, the documentation and make sure that the clinical documentation, uh, is satisfactory so that we can minimize the number of denials we would get. And this is done at every hospital.
This is Michael. If I can have a, uh, turn to slide seventeen. And this is analysis of what we call our net patient revenue per adjusted admission. Now, on the left-hand side, you'll see on the UMC, so what this means is how much cash are we collecting on each adjusted admission at UMC? You'll see in the, in the, uh, we're almost there. Yes, right there. You'll see on, on the blue line, which is fiscal year eighteen, we were averaging about seven thousand dollars net revenue for adjusted admission. In twenty nineteen, which is the green line, we increased that to about eighty-five hundred, eight thousand seven fifty. Then in fiscal year twenty, that increased a little bit above nine thousand, but you'll see in fiscal year twenty twenty-one how over the last several months, we've increased that to, uh, twelve thousand five hundred, thirteen thousand. So you'll see a year-to-year overall improvement in terms of how we are collecting on each adjusted admission. And the same thing on, uh, on El Paso Children's. You'll see, uh, what that they're trending is exactly the same. You'll see, uh, twenty nineteen, the green bar was better than twenty eighteen. The orange bar of twenty twenty was better than twenty nineteen. And then the red bar, which is twenty twenty-one, that's even better than, than twenty twenty. But Letty's correct from a standpoint, this is a never-ending process in terms of a process improvement, because we want to capture as much as we can and get paid, honestly, just get paid for, uh, for what we do. But it's a combination of many, many different things along the revenue cycle process.
And this is especially true, Commissioner Stout, for a, a, in, in a hospital that, that works with a, a teaching facility. Be- because with a physician, it, it's an education process that continues annually. And, and we have established also a new department that works hand-in-hand with the physicians, our clinical documentation. And that has added so much value in this process as well, and, uh, I think it'll continue to grow. This is a last-year event.
Thank you. I don't know if anybody else has more questions, and they want to go, but I have a couple more questions, but I'm, I'm willing to see if anybody else wants to chime in before I go, before I go.
Anyone else, Commissioner?
I, I'm gonna have questions, but Commissioner Stout, go ahead. Go ahead and finish with yours.
Okay. When it comes to the, um, on, on slide forty-nine, where, where we have the, the tax rate scenarios, can you, I don't know, I don't know if, if Michael or, or maybe Wally can also help, help explain to the public and, and to the court, um, and the members of the, of UMC's board, just what, what the, I guess, um, the, the no-new revenue rate, um, use, I guess, used to be called the, the, um, effective rate. I think that's what we used to, uh, call it before, before the legislature changed the name. And, and I, I, I was under the impression that if you go to the, if, if you're gonna go to the no-new revenue rate or the effective rate, basically it would be compensating for, for increases in property value, and, and therefore, um, generally taxpayers or, or property owners would not see an increase in their taxes. But, but here we're showing that, um, with the no-new revenue rate, there, there still is gonna be a, an annual change of twelve dollars and sixty-seven cents over, over the prior year. Can you explain, um, why that is?
Uh, okay. Uh, this is Michael. Let me go first, and then Wally, if you can chime in. Now, looking at the average home value, now that's, that's looking at, at home values across the board. I mean, at, uh, I mean, so I, I do get your, um, I do get the question that you're asking, but I guess the other part that I'm looking at is you go up above, in the middle part of the section, you'll see in the expected property tax revenue, you know, the increase from the no-new revenue rate in twenty twenty-two compared to the, the expected revenue in twenty twenty-one, virtually most of it's just coming from new values, or, uh, was it new properties, new improvements? Uh, so that's where, that's where, although we are getting two-point-seven million dollars more in tax revenue, virtually most of it's coming from new property than new improvement. Um, Wally, can, can you add a little further on that, especially when we talk about the average home value?
I'd be glad.
Yeah, I, I understand that, that, that typically happens, you know, I mean, year over year, we, we typically see more properties come on the, on the, on the tax rolls, and so that's just the expansion in the ba- in the tax base itself, right? That, 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 uh, two-point, uh, seven million dollars, the, the variance in, in the amount of money that, that UMC would receive if we were to set the tax rate at the no-new revenue rate. But my, my question is more, more pointed at the, the, the amount that, you know, the, 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 the property owner would pay um, if we, if we went down to the, to what used to be known as the effective rate, now is the no-new tax, no, no revenue rate.
So, um, Commissioner and Judge Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. Another component driving that increase of the, of the twelve dollars and sixty-seven cents you see down there going with the no-new revenue tax rate. And you are correct, the no-new revenue, revenue tax rate is what we used to refer to as the effective tax rate. The no-new revenue rate is essentially the same, the rate we need to bring in the same amount of tax revenue from the same properties that were taxed last year. So the gain that we're picking up is a result of two things, new property value and the average increase in average home value as well. Because you'll see that average home values went up from a hundred and thirty-six to a hundred and forty-six, or a ninety-nine-hundred-dollar increase. So that also drives a component of the increase, even though by adopting the, if you were to consider the no-new revenue tax rate, why is it resulting in a twelve-dollar bottom-line increase?
This is Michael. Maybe a, a better reflection is if I were to show that for every hundred thousand dollars of home value, you would see that, uh, under the twenty-twenty-one tax rate, that would be at twenty-six point seven cents. And under the twenty-twenty-two no-new revenue rate, that would be at twenty-five point eight cents. So for every hundred thousand dollar of value, yes, you would see that, in this case, for every hundred thousand dollar value, you would be paying less. So maybe that's another component I should show on here, is based upon every hundred thousand dollar value as to what, as to what that tax rate would be. Uh, we know in previously, in previous years, we've been showing just average home value, but that does, was it like Wally just mentioned, that also does consider the new improvements and the new properties, which may have a higher home value, that is artificially increasing that average home value up. But, uh, I mean, we can quickly make a, a, a presentation that for every one hundred thousand dollars of home value, this is what your annual property taxes would be. And in this case, it would be slightly less, because the twenty-twenty-one tax, or as adopted, was twenty-six point seven cents per a hundred thousand. And then, and under the no-new revenue rate would be twenty-five point eight cents for every one hundred thousand.
Right, I mean, I, I guess I'm, I mean, I'm asking this because I've heard, for example, um, Donna Kilgore at the CAD saying, you know, if, um, if, if the county or the city or the hospital district is, you know, just assesses the, the, the same tax rate as last year, um, in effect, it is a tax increase, and, 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 and we're the ones that are increasing, we're the ones that are increasing taxes, because we're not going back down to what the effective rate, or what it used to be with the, the effective rate now that no-new revenue rate is. But, uh, um, so that, that twelve dollars and sixty-seven cents that the tax, the average homeowner would still have to pay, that's, that's basically due to the, um, just the, the average increase in home values. So basically, if your home didn't increase in value, you wouldn't pay anymore. But if your home did increase in value, then you would pay that, whatever, whatever the difference was. Is that, is that, is that the case? And, and, uh, you know, in comparison to if we stayed at the current rate or, or the last year's fis- last year's rate, um, it, it doesn't matter if your, if your value went, stayed the same, you would still be paying more? Do you understand what I'm saying, Wally? Maybe I'm confusing it more.
If, if your value didn't change from one year to the next, so if you stayed at the average of a hundred and, you know, you weren't the ten-thousand-dollar increase. If you stayed at one thirty-six, and we, uh, adopted the same tax rate for UMC, for UMC tax purposes, that is effectively no tax increase. We're, we're technically increasing the rate by three and a half percent, but if your home value did not change, you will not see an increase. We're just seeing three and a half percent gain overall for the revenues in aggregate for new construction and valuation increases.
Right, but so, so then, I guess, I, I, I'm still confused about the, the twelve dollar and sixty-seven cent increase at the, at the no-new reven- revenue rate. Shouldn't, if, if we went down to the no-new revenue rate, shouldn't it be that, you know, um, it, it, it makes up for the fact that somebody's property value went up, and so we're, we're effectively not increasing their taxes um, at, at, at any point, whether, whether their property value went up or it stayed the same?
Well, in that scenario, the tax increase purely is because of an increase in the appraised value, not a change in rate. That is a valuation constitution.
So we could, so, so we could argue with Donna Kilgore if we went down to the effective rate and say, that's on you, not on us?
I'll let you make that argument, but, I mean, there's, there's some validity to that. If values change, you're going to pay, you're gonna pay more taxes with a lower tax rate, because your values went up.
Right.
Yeah, on, on the average, the home in El Paso County, and we have the homestead exemption, it went up by seven point six percent.
Yeah. It's a, um, I guess my, my last, my last question has to do, so this, this budget obviously does not, um, take into account any ARPA funding that the county or maybe the city might be, um, might be, uh, thinking about, uh, giving to UMC as, as, as requested. It seems to me, uh, you know, if, 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 if we do that, you know, is there, is, is there an appetite to, you know, to take the tax rate and, and, and leave it at the, at the no-new revenue rate, as opposed to raising taxes and taking, um, you know, fifteen to thirty million dollars of ARPA funding out of the community that could be used for other, um, other, other projects or other programs?
I would say that, uh, you know, the, the concern is that if we take ARP funds, they're finite. It's for, it's, it's a finite dollar versus, uh, leaving it at the same current rate. As we look at these, uh, increase in minimum wage and inert salaries, that goes on perpetually. And so it may break us, uh, you know, stay neutral in, in fiscal year twenty-two, but then in fiscal year twenty-three, that gap is gonna continue indefinitely. The ARP funds, and we received, uh, correspondence from the Texas Department of, uh, Texas Division of Emergency Management. You know, what we've asked for in terms of the ARP funds, really won't even cover all our expenses. And we, we did that knowing that because there were other, uh, priorities that the county was looking at. But we received this letter just recently, I think this week, where they're basically saying that the funding really is supposed to go towards COVID-nineteen response efforts, uh, such as enhanced staffing expenses, premium pay, and so forth. So, uh, you know, the, the concern I would have, David, is, you know, it depends, it, it's, it's theoretical. What specifically are we looking at in terms of the, the county saying, look, this is the amount we would get? Would this be enough to sort of help us in terms of state the new, uh, the no-new tax increase? And, uh, you know, to weigh that? I mean, right now, I think you're just saying, what if, but there is no number attached to it. And, as you know, we did not include any ARP funds in our current budget proposal for twenty-two, because we're not aware of what the county is, is willing to assist us with.
Uh, this is Michael, and, and the other component of that, uh, we have not heard in, uh, although there was the announcement probably about two or three weeks ago from FEMA that they had, uh, obligated our application process, our sixty-million-dollar application process to move forward. Uh, to, to this day, we have not received any word from Texas Department of Emergency Management as to, one, uh, what amount are they going to pay, and then two, if any amount they're going to pay. Yes, so, yes, so this twenty-twenty-two budget does not include any potential amounts, uh, what I call contingent, uh, gains or, you know, contingent revenue, simply because we do not, uh, know those for, uh, for certain.
Uh, and if I could add, Ian, um, Mr. Gado and Judge, many of this has come in. If I could ju- add a little bit of background with regards to that as well. Uh, and this is, these are operating funds and part of the operating budget. So I think the other funds are, are as, um, Mr. Seenthron indicated, they're one-time funds. And, um, the property tax revenue becomes part of the operating cost. So I think it's best to keep that separate. I think it's a good, um, discussion point to have. Uh, but I, but I do think that it would be, uh, preferable to keep and maintain those two things separate, the operating costs versus these one-time-use funds. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, firm.
Yeah, it, I mean, it, it just, um, it, it gives me, it gives me heartburn to, to, to even, you know, wanna stay at the, at the, at the current rate. I mean, I, I certainly appreciate, um, some of the reasons, uh, why, uh, that's being, that's being requested and, um, you know, uh, but, but, you know, it, it gives me heartburn to, to wanna basically increase taxes on folks after such a hard year. And, and, and especially if, if, you know, I, I mean, I know it, it, you, 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 you know, people may wanna keep it separate, but in, in my opinion, um, you know, this, this, uh, ARPA funding, even, even though it is, you know, one-time, you know, raising taxes on people and, and as well as, as taking, and taking such a huge chunk from, uh, from what we're, from what we're looking at using at, at the county and the needs at the county, I mean, it, it, it just doesn't seem like, um, you know, I, I, I think UMC's, um, position is, I mean, it's not in the best, there, you're not in the best fiscal position you could possibly be right now, but, um, you're also not in the worst. could possibly be right now, but, um, you're also not in the worst that we've, that we've ever been. And, and, you know, some of the sacrifices that we've made in the past have taken us into some, uh, some even worse conditions and, and, you know, we're building, building out of that. And I think that's, uh, I think that's great, but we have to, uh, I, I think, keep in mind the people who are, who are, who are going to be footing this bill and the people who are going to be missing out on, um, I, you know, some of the things that, that, uh, that we could be utilizing the A R P A funding. So I don't know if I could be, uh, if I would be amenable to increasing taxes and giving, uh, such a, such a huge chunk of our A R P A funding to U M C both. Um, I'm having a hard, even wanting to, you know, uh, go, go to the, to the, uh, same, last year's same rate. I just, um, I, I, I think it's really difficult for us to be asking people to pay more in taxes, um, when it's been such a rough year.
Understood, Commissioner. And, and keep in mind that the difference would be from, from current year to the proposed, leaving it at the current rate, uh, would be an increase of two dollars a month for a typical household. As far as the A R P, the, we're not taking the majority of the A R P or requesting that. The thirty million we've requested is only eighteen and a half percent of the hundred and sixty-two million A R P funds you've, you've received. And additionally, I, you know, I get the impression that this was a discussion brought up at our border rat meeting with a number of providers, that D S H S has implied that the, the, uh, A R P funds really should be prioritized towards COVID-related expenses above all of the things. And so, uh, the thirty million doesn't even cover all of our COVID-related expenses. We've reduced that ask knowing that, that the county had other, other areas that, that were priorities for them.
Um, I don't have any, I don't have anything further. Appreciate it.
Commissioner Ogden, go ahead.
Thank you, Judge. Um, thank you, Jacob. Thank you, Michael. And thank you, Letty, for the presentation. You all are always so thorough and are able to explain these very, um, complicated concepts so well. So I wanted to thank you for that, as well as your efforts to increase the minimum wage and have competitive salaries. Um, those are things that are, of course, are priorities for the county. Um, so I, I want to thank you for that. Um, and, and actually, I, I want to follow up on the discussion that we're having or that we just had, um, with Commissioner Stout, because I had some of those same questions about whether it would be possible if the county could spend more of its A R P A funding supporting the work of the hospital district, if it could be possible to remain at the no new revenue rate, um, instead of having it go up. It, it seems to me, based on the chart, the difference between the no new revenue rate and using the same rate as last year or this year is about four point seven million. Um, I, and I think, um, the discussions that we've had over the use of our A R P A funds, it seems to me that, um, most of the commissioners are in agreement that U M C has to be a priority, um, that those funds really, um, well, I know in my own personal view, um, uh, were made exactly to, to support the work that U M C is doing. Um, so I, I know, Jacob, I think you mentioned that you haven't really had, um, you don't have a specific amount, um, that the county has, has committed to U M C of the A R P A funds, but I'm wondering if we could start having, um, you know, those discussions? And I know that we're planning on going back and revisiting the priorities, um, for spending of the A R P A funds, the commissioners, we're going to go back and look at those, but I really feel that we need to do that, um, keeping in mind that U M C has to be a priority for us and for those funds. And I know that it's only there, you know, the next three years, um, but I feel that those funds were made to, you know, take some of that burden off of the community that's still suffering and reeling from the economic effects of the, of the pandemic. And that's why if we could get more money into the hands of U M C from those funds and not, um, not have our taxpayers have to pay more, uh, that's what I would be in favor of. Um, I, I, I think that there is room. We've had preliminary discussions, of course, on the spending of the A R P A funds, but I think that there's definitely room to increase the allotment that we had originally spoken about for U M C and to try to get U M C the money that it needs to continue doing what it's doing, which is saving lives, right? U M C literally is saving lives in our community every single day. So I think they need to be a priority for those A R P A funds, especially if that means that we can take some of that tax burden from the taxpayers.
And Commissioner Ogden, I think, you know, as you know, as we try to finalize our budget, it would, we did not include any A R P funds in the budget. If we were to consider something like that, we would need to know what that amount is so we could include it in the budget. My worry obviously would be that we, we go with the no new tax, uh, rate, uh, which would be a reduction, um, of about twenty-six dollars a year. That would create about a four and a half million dollar difference and it would put us in a negative position in, in our fiscal year budget. And so for us, it would be really important to have a commitment that says, this is the amount we're going to include into your fiscal year twenty-two budget from the A R P fund. And if that amount, we'd ask for thirty, now you're saying it's going to be thirty-four and a half or thirty-five million, if we can count on that and we can then revise our budget to include that, then, uh, we will be amenable. But I need to, again, uh, express that this is a one-time, uh, pickup, whereas the increase in, in minimum wage, which many of you as commissioners have asked us to do, that is an ongoing expense. So this may be an issue that we kick down the road two years from now, but that we'll have to revisit in the next year or two, uh, when we come up with our, our future budgets. And so just, you know, please, uh, keep that in mind. And if we did that, given that the, the tone I get from the new correspondence from the Texas Division of Emergency Management, that they're going to look at the city and counties use the A R P funds to address some of these COVID expenses, that if we do that, that it would also be, it, it would not, uh, it would not be counted as, whatever funds we get aren't counted as towards the FEMA funds we requested in the event that the state governor decides that those funds have come out of county funds as opposed to state funds.
Uh, this is Michael. One other item to consider, and I'm always, uh, doing forward looking at, you know, we have a ratings call with Standard and Poor's, uh, on or about September first, and purposely it was, it was set that way because they wanted to have an idea as to what, uh, the district's approved budget and tax rate were going to be. So that is a, um, so to comment, uh, off of what Jacob was saying in terms of, you know, any, any tax rate decrease, I'm always concerned what that sends a message to the rating agencies? And then also that if, you know, if we do or do not have in our budget any type of A R P A, uh, you know, funding, uh, I mean, that could send a, a potential negative message to, uh, to the rating agencies, particularly after last year, we had received a rating, uh, rating, uh, upgrades from, from, from two of the three. So again, that's another, that's another factor to consider, particularly if we're looking to, to do some, um, some capital financing within the next twelve months.
Um, so Betsy, when are we going to have these discussions where we're looking at the priorities for the spending of the A R P A funds? I know that we were planning on revisiting those.
It's on your agenda for next Tuesday for your budget meeting. Um, A R P is the A R P budget and going back through that and, um, identifying is one of your first items on your Tuesday agenda.
Great.
If I may, Commissioner, also part of the discussion, when you all did last discuss this, was, um, the court identifying any additional partners, trying to see if we could get any more, um, anybody else to partner. And so we do need to, um, proceed with the work on that as well, like formally asking uh, other agencies if they're willing to partner to help use any of the funding for this purpose.
Yeah. I appreciate you bringing that up. I think that's, that's definitely very important.
Yeah. And the way we've pursued this is that, you know, I know Jacob has reached out and, and I've reached out as a support, and so that I don't go into any definite situation for them, but, uh, Jacob has reached out to the mayor and to others. And then I've reached out and said, you know, we're really in support. We'd love to sit down and see how we can help this. Everybody has said, you know, they understand that the, you know, how valuable it is, U M C Children's Hospital is to the community. So it's just a matter of, I think what you're saying, Jacob, you need a little bit more definite information so that you can include that in your budget. Am I correct, Jacob?
Uh, yes, sir. I mean, we've approached, uh, the, the city as well and, and again, uh, you know, the, and I know you've been supportive of that. And all, my, my position, Commissioner Ogden, is, is, uh, if, if the county's saying, if the hospital district will save the no new, uh, what is it, the no new revenue rate, and we'll get A R P funds, uh, to the thirty-four and a half million, whatever the, the difference is, we'll need to know that, you know, as part of our budget. If we, if we won't know, then I would say we would still leave it at the, uh, last year's rate, because my concern is to go in on, on that and then for whatever reason, the number changes and then we find ourselves upside down, especially since we're trading a one-time, uh, A R P funds for fiscal year twenty-two that will not address shortfalls in fiscal years, uh, twenty-three on down with this increase in, uh, the salaries that we're looking at.
Thank you. Commissioner, I've got, Commissioner Leon has, uh, would like to speak. Do you, you want to finish or do you want to?
No, go ahead, Commissioner Leon.
Okay. Commissioner Leon, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, I agree with Commissioner Ogden, uh, U M C is a priority in my mind. Now, I've got some questions and this is, goes back to the earlier part of your presentation where you were talking about length of stay, uh, both at the U M C and children's, that it has increased. Uh, I would, I would anticipate that the answer to that is because of COVID, uh, but is that correct?
Uh, yes, uh, this is Michael Nunez, yes. Uh, with a lot of the COVID activity, particularly when you see both, uh, both charts on slide twelve, uh, in November, both, uh, both hospitals hit, uh, hit an all-time high in terms of average length of stay, and that's when we had our, our local COVID surge. Post that, it's been, uh, it's been, uh, although they've been both declining, uh, they are still COVID-related. And even though right now, the, the amount of inpatients that we have, you know, back in November, we had like two hundred and forty-plus COVID inpatients, today we have fourteen. Nevertheless, the people that are still coming in, I, uh, and this is only a theory, but it's, uh, but it's, but it's, uh, you know, nationwide, that it's the deferred healthcare that occurred during last year, that patients stayed away from seeing their doctors, seeing their physicians, coming to hospitals, then now the lingering effects of that, thus even with the non-COVID patients, we're still seeing an increase in our, in our case mix index, which is patient acuity, thus affecting the average length of stay.
Now, it surprised me more on the children's side because there, there weren't as many COVID cases as compared to U M C. But is, on the children's side, Cindy, is it also the same, uh, response as Michael's?
So it's a little bit different from the perspective of, you're right, we didn't have a lot of COVID cases. In fact, we probably had two handfuls of, uh, very acute patients that came through that required complex care for COVID patients. However, when you look at our specific volumes, you look at our neonatal intensive care unit, we've seen a great increase with the volumes there. A lot of children that are being born, um, from a premature standpoint, so that's increasing that length of stay there. But additionally, we don't have in the, in the total numbers, we don't have a lot of general pediatric volume that's coming through. And so typically when you do, that that kind of brings that average down a little bit. Now that, you know, things are opening back up, children have been getting out into the summer, we're starting to see more of that general pediatric volume, which helps in that average for us.
Now, obviously it's more expensive for the, the families. The more days you spend in the hospital, the, the more expensive it's going to be. But depending, I guess, on the payer mix, uh, both for you, Cindy, and Jacob, uh, i- is it much more expensive for the hospital to also have longer stays, uh, as an average?
It is, because, uh, typically your payer is going to be paying based on the diagnoses that assumes a certain number of days in the hospital. If the patient is, it takes longer in recovery, and with COVID, sometimes it does extend that. Or they have other complications, uh, comorbidities as they're known, the patient could actually stay longer than would be typical in a length of stay. So for example, we might get paid based on an assumption that a patient could be in the hospital for four days, but the patient may be in the hospital for six to eight days. When that happens, we don't get compensated for those additional days, even though there's related expenses and salaries and medication and supplies related to that. So that is a challenge. We do monitor our length of stay closely, uh, on a patient-by-patient basis, but again, no individual is the same as another. We always have to take into account that some, some patients are going to take longer, especially if they've, uh, they haven't really been taking care of themselves, uh, if they don't have an assigned doctor, if they have other issues that need to be addressed before their discharge.
Even at, I think you have a sixty-six percent funded payer rate, even at that rate, uh, you, you still, on those extended stays, you still, uh, come up shorter than, than you should?
It can happen because even if you're funded, even if you have insurance, the insurance company much like CMS for Medicare and Medicaid is going to pay a set rate for a specific diagnosis. So the, the longer you stay, doesn't mean we get more money. There's a cap, and if you stay longer than what that cap allows, then that's at our expense. We absorb it.
Okay. I also noticed that, in, in talking to you and Cindy, that, uh, El Paso Health has had to return profits to, to the government, but yet on one of the slides or a couple of the slides, Michael, I noticed that their position wasn't as strong as I would imagine, uh, because of them having to return profits, but yet their position isn't as strong as you would anticipate.
Yes. In fact, uh, uh, yes, uh, on, let me go to that slide, but there is, now, under the state Medicaid program, there is, uh, the state does, uh, put a cap in terms of how much Medicaid managed care organization, uh, can make a profit off of its Medicaid, uh, program. So for, so for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, uh, that, on a state fiscal year basis, with that ends August thirty-first, El Paso Health has virtually been capped at their, at their profits, uh, for about the better part of the last six months. Uh, they are going to be, uh, returning, we are projecting about, uh, thirty-eight to forty million dollars, uh, for the state for the twelve months ended August thirty-first, and that amount will be due back to the state during the month of December. And that is one of the, uh, one of the initiatives that we talked about in terms of El Paso Health, is that, uh, entering into the Medicare line of business, because on the Medicare line of business, there is no cap on the profits that, that any managed care or, organization makes. So because of that, yes, uh, although the, well, El Paso Health days cash on hand or the amount of cash that they have, I think they're approaching about a hundred million, but here by the time December comes around, uh, that's going to drop down to about sixty, simply because of what they call that experience rebate penalty, uh, the managed care organizations had to pay back to the state.
And this was driven mainly because, uh, many patients or many of its members were not going to doctor's offices or going to the hospital during the COVID phase. So the experience rebate is exactly that, that the experience of the, uh, of the healthcare organization or the managed care organization as it relates to the kind of dollars spent on treatment for those members, uh, was a lot less. And so the state said, because it was so less, and they recognize it because COVID, people were staying at home, people and children were not in, in, uh, you know, face-to-face in-person school, that the amount of care provided was less. And so they're, they're carving out that amount, the thirty-eight to forty million, for example, from El, El Paso Health, as part of that experience rebate. So that is, uh, that is being returned in, in December of this, uh, this, this calendar year.
Okay. And, and as you know, uh, we ourselves, the county, has not decided on a tax rate either. That's what we're going to be talking about next week. Uh, I am concerned about the, the twelve-dollar increase, but, uh, on the, on the other hand, uh, the county has no control over, uh, valuation, uh, over, uh, more buildings, more property at has no control over valuation, over more buildings, more property added to the tax rules. So, having said that, I want to circle back and talk about the minimum wage that you all are talking about. You're going from eleven dollars to thirteen, but it's not going to be effective till the last quarter. My question is, is there any way you can go up a dollar? But I know that is also affecting compression issues all up and down the chain, that you can go up a dollar mid-year, then the second dollar in the fourth quarter. How much of an impact would that be?
So, the minimum wage going from eleven to thirteen, the reason is two dollars, because this fiscal year twenty-one, we did not do an increase. Those were expected to go into the fourth quarter, so the two-dollar increase going from eleven to thirteen was going to take place in July of fiscal year twenty-two, or calendar year twenty-two, so they are already in the fourth quarter. And, you know, as, the goal is actually directed by, by your offices, our commissioners and judge, was to get to a living wage of fifteen. And so, our goal is that by getting caught up, then hopefully by fiscal year twenty-four, our associates that are minimum wage would be at fifteen, and that will provide them a, a living wage. And then the goal would be that as that adjusted, as, as they typically do, that we try to stay current with that, so that our employees are frontline providers, and I consider a lot of these people, not just nurses and respiratory therapists or doctors, but it's the person that, you know, cleaning a room and disinfecting it, it's the food service person, getting meals to the staff, that they also deserve a living wage.
And I understand that, but really, my question to you is, what would the impact be if you go another dollar before the fourth quarter, and the last dollar in July?
So, each dollar is, I think, six million in annualized, so if we go a dollar in, say, mid-year, then that would be a three-million-dollar increase. And then we do another dollar increase in the fourth quarter, that would be a million-and-a-half increase. So, it would increase it by another two million, I think.
So, it would be more doing that than opposed to just doing the, the one-time change starting in July.
No, I, I understand that, but it would be more, but the employees would benefit sooner.
True. So, so for example, if the idea was, let's do a dollar increase in March, and then a dollar increase in July, it would run us two million dollars more. If we wanted to do a dollar increase in January, and then another dollar increase in July, it would be conceivably another, probably what, another three, five-hundred dollars more. But, you're right, I mean, these, these are the heroes that during COVID, during the mass shooting, they came in, no one complained, they, they've taken care of our community. And so, our goal in, in making this increase is to recognize that.
And then, just a request, that you may look at this and see what you can move around, that you may delay something else in order to take care of those employees a little quicker, that you stagger their, their increase over, over six months, instead of the, the whole two dollars at the end of the, of the quarters.
We can look at that, and then the, the salary increases we're looking at as it relates to the nursing, to meet our nursing shortfall, takes effect starting the beginning of the fiscal year in October.
Well, it's already started already.
Well, you're right, it already has started, but we'll look at that to see if we can split the two dollars, so instead of hitting both in, in the fourth quarter, that we can maybe move one up to the second or third quarter, so that it, the employees get to benefit from it in, at an earlier stage.
Okay, well, thank you. That, that's all the questions I had, Judge.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Robinson, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Go, go ahead, Commissioner.
Well, let me just start, you know, the bottom line, healthcare should be our highest priority right now. We have not had a situation like we did this, this past year as far as the pandemic, well, let me ask you this question. So, someone, someone tell me what situation or, or, have we had a pandemic impacting healthcare in the past? Of, of this magnitude?
Probably Spanish influenza in the mid-Minneapolis.
Fifty, fifty years ago?
Probably, you're right, about a hundred years ago.
So, so in, in, in the current era, in, in, in the, in the last fifty years, the last twenty years, we have not had anything that impacted the, the healthcare at UMC. This pandemic we just went through, or still going through, has had. So, bottom line is that, from my perspective, what we should be doing is that the, the money from, from the adjustment fund, ERP funds, we, that we receive thirty, at a starting point, I would say thirty million dollars for, for UMC should be taken off the top for, for, for the issues and the effort that, that's going to impact the healthcare. Now, I agree with some of the comments that Commissioner Leon made in regards to, which I've talked about as well in the past, as far as the minimum wage, increase in minimum wage, as best we can, you know, we, we talk often about having a minimum wage for all our employees, well, as a minimum, we should be at the minimum wage for all our employees. So, therefore, we should make every effort to get there as best we can, and, and as fast as we can, without hampering our maintenance and particularly operations of, of UMC as, as a whole, to include the, the Children's Hospital. As far as the tax rate is concerned, I think that after we have some healthy discussions next week in regards to which direction we're going to go in health, the tax rate, we make adjustments there, there too. But from, from my perspective, bottom line is thirty, thirty million dollars is a starting point for UMC to go, before we go with any other issues. It'd be nice to have other things, to put those dollars in, in the community, but what's more important, particularly now, we don't know what the impact, what this surge is going to be, as far as the virus is, is concerned, that we, we may, and hopefully don't, that we get back to a situation where we have a major healthcare issue that will further devastate our healthcare, our economy, in general, our community as a whole. That's all I have for right now, but once again, my, my position, direction with healthcare, and we start at twelve-point thirty million dollars.
Thank you, Commissioner Robinson. It's just, I'd like to make a couple of comments, and one, one of them is, you know, there's so many vulnerable things that are coming up, and when you're looking at, you know, when we talk about how important it is, but I think we really need to look at how tight the situation is, you know, we're not looking at, you know, I've gotten very close to the nursing associations and the discussions that they're, they're having with me about changing careers, not feeling appreciated, so you've got that, that realm of, you know, something that's, we're putting a lot of burden on UMC to sort of solve an issue that was caused primarily from, from a lot of different things, from, you know, not having the support or feeling the support. And so, that, that's one big issue, and I'm, I'm glad that you're looking at it, but I think it's a little bigger than, than we might think, just from the, the discussions that I've had on people changing careers, people not wanting to, talking to UTEP and UTEP not getting, a lot of people going into, into nursing, and so we've got all these moving parts that have to do with recruitment, and, and I agree also with Commissioner Leon, that maybe we could do something quicker, because I think there's got to be a gesture right away that UMC does care, and so maybe by saying, let, let's get that increase a little faster, might be a good gesture, that, that we could start that relationship with. You know, we've got things that are pending, you know, we're, we're looking at the possibility where migrants used to come through very easily through, through El Paso, and there's a lot of indications that we might be keeping them a little bit longer here in our community, which obviously always has the, a collateral impact on, on UMC. When they're going through in seventy-two hours, and they're going through to all parts of the country, we don't get to see a lot of impact. But the discussions of, that we're now having, and, and the governor thinking that, you know, we should not do the transportation, and not only that, I think that one we could sort of address, but there's a lot of indication that refugees might stay longer in, in El Paso for, for court hearings and so forth, so that's another thing that we, we have to look at, and so I'm, I'm concerned about that, and, you know, also very concerned about, you know, what do we do to address that we found that we're a very vulnerable community, and, you know, that we need to focus. Jacob and I have spent a lot of time talking about the need for prevention, and, and prevention is going to be something that, to me, is an investment, right? Because we're trying to invest on individuals not having to go to the hospital, not having to be in, in a situation that it's critical. We also know that we have both delayed in children, parents were not taking their children into, into the hospitals or clinics because of their fear, the fear of the child getting into, so they have the same, the same delayed treatment, I think it's, it's going to happen to us. And then on top of that, we've got the mental health delayed treatment, we're beginning to see a tremendous amount of, you know, of impact of mental health, of suicides, of, you know, it just, and, and unfortunately, it seems to all fall on, on the hospital system as a way to solve this. So, obviously, I'm really in support of, of what do we need to do? And if it takes a combination of a little bit of an increase, because we do, as much as we don't want to have an increase, if we don't have the right increase, then how are we going to address some of the issues and problems that we're having that are coming at us? So we can't be blinded to understand that these are much bigger than we've ever had, much bigger, you know, that, and then the other thing, when, when Commissioner Robinson says, have we ever had anything similar? Well, you know, we've discussed it, Jacob, and we've had influenza seasons that have been really hard on the community, I mean, on the UMC, of almost saturation points. So, for the longest time, we've got all these issues. We also know that the variation might be coming at us. We also know that we might have one of the hardest-hit influences that we've, we've ever had, combining into this kind of perfect storm. So, I'm, I'm still concerned about, we're sort of looking at it a little, you know, and so these are the things that we can do now without taking into consideration some of the underlying things that are lurking at us, and so very concerned about that, and, and I think we have to figure, when we talk about thirty million, is that sufficient? And when we, you know, when we reach out to the city, do we be, become greater advocates to let them know, you know, this is, you know, we, we could be in a very critical situation, and the burden on UMC could, and the Children's Hospital, could be very significant. So, just want to emphasize that, that I think when we're looking at it, we're looking at it sort of in a conservative way, but I'd like to look at it, what are some of the potential things that are out there, and how do we address those things when they come at us? We can, you know, the preventive medicine or preventive care, we've got to be a big part of that. I mean, it's extremely critical when we see so many people that died with underlying conditions, and, and, you know, how are we going to address that situation? So I don't want to be an alarmist, but I do feel that the, the budget is sort of focused on, on, on more of a conservative, if things sort of go a little bit better, and I'm, I'm looking at it from the other perspective, because we saw how difficult our community, what it had to face. And we're always about, what, fifteen, maybe fifteen, twelve to fifteen days away from what happens in other communities, and we're already seeing some huge hits in, in Austin and San Antonio at their hospitals and saturation points. So, you know, I guess it's, I, I wish I had an answer, Jacob, but I, I do feel that the budget is sort of leaning towards, with a little bit of hope that things get better. And I, I would like for it to lean more into, what do we do if these things do begin to happen all at one time? And I, I don't know how you can approach that, but I think it's, we, we might be in a very critical situation because of the backlash of things that didn't take place for, since the pandemic started. Any comment?
And I would say that, you, you bring up a good point, Judge, because, you know, when this budget was done, it was predicated on COVID, on being on the decline, and that things were going to get somewhat stable, and that some of these changes were, were going to be, you know, modified in our fiscal year twenty-two, recognizing that. But as you know, and as reported by Border Rack and National News, COVID continues to surge with the Delta variant. And as I mentioned earlier at the beginning, ninety-four percent of the hospitalizations are due to the, the Delta variant. And, you know, other healthcare providers and ourselves are worried about, well, right now, we're somewhat stable, we do lag two to three weeks from the rest of Texas and these kinds of things, and we're preparing for potential surge. Add to that that now you have students attending in-person at school with no mask mandate, which could potentially increase the number of infections that Children's Hospital would experience, given that some of these new infections are affecting children that are younger, some that are not eligible for, for vaccination. And so, these are things that concern us. You know, we, we have, you know, as mentioned, but, as you mentioned, the nurses, you know, we have a lot of frontline providers that are exhausted, and they're working hard, and they put their lives at risk taking care of patients. They were doing this even before there was a vaccine, they were doing it even before there was a way for us to test to see if you had COVID-nineteen. And so, when we look at things like addressing salaries that we've already put in, in effect to be competitive, it is so that we can build the number of vacant positions we have at UMC. The amounts being paid, you know, are, are competitive. Are, are nurses or, you know, physicians or other people paid enough to put their lives on the line? I don't think so. But this is, this is our attempt to make sure we address it, so there's equity, but we consider our, our competitors and what they're paying, so that we can maintain equitable pay for, for our nursing staff or other frontline providers, respiratory therapists and so forth. The minimum wage, even if there was no COVID, that's something we should do. People should get a living wage, and, and right now, that's determined to be at fifteen. Two, three years from now, ten years from now, it might be more, and we need to be prepared to address that. I like the idea of us being able to stagger it and do a dollar sooner than a dollar later. We need to calculate those numbers, but as you know, our budget, assuming that the tax rate remains the same, is basically flat. It's a hundred-and-seventy-thousand dollars positive. So, if we go to the no-new-tax revenue rate, we're going to be upside down about four-and-a-half million in the red, in terms of our, our net position. If we advance the dollar, one of, you know, the two dollars, one of the dollars a quarter or two earlier, that would bring us even further down into the three-to-five-million-dollar negative. So, I think what would be beneficial is, you know, we would ask that, that the, the current budget as presented be acceptable, subject to getting confirmation from the county definitively, that there is going to be a certain, a specific dollar amount that's going to be available to UMC that we can include in our budget, so that when it is approved, that those dollars are in. Otherwise, my worry is that something else happens down the line, and we find ourselves upside down at a juncture where we're not sure where the end of COVID is going to take us.
And I just, what I want to do is start the narrative of, we have to be extremely, you know, conscientious that, that we might not be able to handle it just with the ARP funds, and that I'm very concerned that, that we're, you know, that we try to protect someone from paying a little bit more money, but then later on, we're, we're looking for a huge tax increase because we weren't able to take care of business when we needed to. So I don't want to go in saying we're not going to do it without having a discussion that it might be, we might need to balance the two and look ahead, because it's really easy to say, well, let's not have a tax increase, but then because we get into trouble and we get into a difficult situation, then, you know, a year from now, two years from now, we're, we're doubling up on, on our taxpayers. know, a year from now, two years from now, we're doubling up on our taxpayers. So I have to be very conscientious that whether or not, we do not increase, but are we just holding a problem or not dividing the impact going forward? So my narrative is more, let's make sure we understand the kinds of critical things that can happen if we don't, if we don't cut it at the butt right now, that we don't, we're not able to say, okay, let's do this now because this could help us from having an impact later on. And so I never look at things, being in major organizations, you know, you have to look ahead as to what your costs are going to be if you don't do something here. Your cost could be ten times greater going forward simply because you didn't address some of the issues that, when they were needed, they needed to be addressed. So a dollar increase here could cost us four-dollar increase later simply because we didn't address some of the root costs. So I just want to be very cautious and we are capable, we need if we can get some of the root costs now, it's a much more, much more cost-effective than to let it blossom into a problem. And so, like I said, maybe it's not the place right now, but I think our narratives should be, are we capable of getting to some of the root causes right now that are going to be very expensive later on if we don't? So, but once again, I think my message is that it's going to fall pretty heavy, everything sort of around us and COVID and everything is sort of falling on the healthcare system in such a way that I want to make sure that you're able to protect yourself from future, you know, collateral impacts.
Thank you, Judge. And to your point, you know, when you look at a typical tax dollar, as mentioned before, we're only eight and a half cents of that. That's a small portion. Leaving it at the current rate is an increase of two dollars a month for a typical household. And I know other taxing entities have really increased their rates and they take a bigger chunk of that tax dollar. My concern also is, is this hospital prepared to provide equitable care for our community in the event of a crisis? And are we able to provide care even without a crisis for the day-to-day strokes, motor vehicle accidents, broken limbs, and all of that? So, you know, we're more mission-driven in terms of, what are we going to do to make sure that we can provide comparable care that's needed by our community? And then we look at the costs related to that. And so I know there are times when people might feel, well, other taxing entities are increasing their tax rate and therefore we shouldn't. But what I think about is, what is the adequate support we need to provide the healthcare infrastructure for our community at U M C? And so, again, you know, if you look at the no new tax revenue versus the leaving the tax rate the same, the net difference is four and a half million dollars. You know, Commissioner O'Gee, you suggested, well, if we give you thirty-four and a half, would you stay at the no new tax rate? If we have no choice in matter, of course we would. But it's a one-time benefit that will not help for the ongoing increase. The minimum wage increase for every dollar is about six million dollars. And so we will be paying annualized with a two-dollar minimum wage, twelve million a year. When we go to thirteen dollars as the minimum wage, add another six million. When we go to fourteen, fifteen, you add another six million. All these continue to grow and will continue to stay perpetually with us. So this upfront money, as I mentioned before, will help us for fiscal year twenty-two, but it will not address fiscal year twenty-three on down. And so to your point, Judge, it is kicking the can down the road that eventually we're going to have to have this discussion and we want to make sure that our healthcare providers have an appropriate wage. Nonetheless, if the feeling is, you know, given the COVID experience, we want to stay at the no new tax revenue and, you know, will make up that difference. And if we're looking at making up the difference even more so by initiating the minimum wage increase sooner in the fiscal year and we could get that addressed in the A R P funds, we could look at that. All I would ask is that we have a definitive commitment that I can, so that when our budget is approved, it includes those dollars so that I don't worry and lose sleep at night that what may be thirty-four, thirty-six million all of a sudden becomes ten or fifteen and then we wind up upside down. And that's my only concern. So if, you know, Betsy is saying that this is the decision that's going to be discussed on Tuesday, or if you all are ready to say, you know what, if you stay at the no new tax revenue, we'll commit right now, you can modify your budget, we'll put in, you know, the thirty-four and a half million or whatever, that we can, and that that's what gets approved, then, you know, we can certainly accept that. Just realize fiscal year twenty-three, we're going to be talking about these increased salary costs that were postponed by a year.
Can I have a hand, Judge? Sorry.
I'm sorry.
This is. I'm sorry.
Yeah, who said?
I just want to add some operational kind of tie-in to that. You know, the contract labor component for one month in May was seven million dollars. And it's hard to fathom that what we're talking about here from property taxes is five million dollars. And the tie-in to that contract label alone for us was less than that. So from an operational perspective, you know, I'm looking at what our nurses do and the turnover rate that I see every month is overwhelming, you know? And I know Jacob said it a couple of times already, but if we have one more big event like this, you know, we've had a lot of turnover. You know, the reality that you see in the public is happening here day-to-day with our own team members. They're leading because a third event like this, I'm not sure what's going to happen with this community hospital. It's tough.
Well, and with any hospital, because the truth is, we're hearing more and more, unfortunately not here locally, but that, you know, a lot of the frontline providers are saying, if ninety percent of the COVID patients in the hospital are not vaccinated, that was preventable. And now it puts the frontline providers at risk as well and their family members and if they have children that are under the age of twelve and ineligible for vaccine, putting them at risk as well.
So my point being that, I think what we want to hear is the more support that the commissioner you can provide, you know, to the staff and to the organization, I think that's going to be well-seen by the, by all the employees here. So that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Letitia. Commissioner Stow, go ahead. Let me get Commissioner Stow first.
I think Erica, our attorney, needed this, was going to hop in and say something. I'm not sure.
Sorry to interrupt. Yes, Commissioner Stow, just really quickly, I just wanted to speak to Mr. Sinthron's point. So the question was, could the court make a commitment today regarding ARPA funds or A R P A funds? And so for purposes of this meeting, the court has not posted the ARPA, at least a commitment of ARPA funds that's posted for Tuesday. So just in the event that a member of the public would want to make a public comment about that kind of commitment, they haven't received proper notice. So I would just advise that certainly the court can keep discussion going, but that the posting be kept for Tuesday and that that, you know, decision be made at that appropriate time.
Thank you, Erica. Appreciate that.
Good, clear.
Go ahead, Commissioner Stow.
So what I would ask is that, given what we've submitted currently, that that be approved, subject to next Tuesday's meeting, if you all make adjustments in terms of a commitment with the ARPA funds of the thirty million plus, the incremental difference in the no new revenue versus leaving it at the current rate, then, you know, certainly knowing that that is definite, then we would adjust our budget accordingly.
Erica, you want to address that?
Sorry, Ms. Sinthron, the proposal was to revise the budget proposal, is that correct?
Erica, what I was saying is that if, I guess what we would ask for is that the budget as proposed for fiscal year twenty-two be approved as it's presented with the caveat that, you know, pending Tuesday's Commissioner Court's meeting, if during that meeting they agree to allocate the thirty million plus the net difference between the no new tax and the same rate tax as part of the ARPA funds, then we would modify our budget to the no new tax rate, but then include the thirty-four and change million into the budget that that's approved, knowing in full disclosure to the commissioners that this will address it for twenty-two, but then in fiscal year twenty-three, we'll be having to discuss this again if we choose to, because now we'll be incurring a twelve-million run rate from twenty-two, from twenty-three forward, not even including the other two one-dollar increments we're going to propose for fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four to get to the fifteen-dollar minimum wage.
So Jacob, the, at this workshop, this work session meeting typically what the Board of Managers has done is recommend it to the Commissioners Court to approve the budget that we've proposed.
Right.
The Commissioners Court has historically not taken any specific action on that, so they'll take our budget, the U M C budget under advisement, and then in a subsequent meeting will make an approval of that budget.
So that works well because then if there is that transfer of funds that will occur, we can then modify the budget and we can work with Betsy to see what current budget versus the modified budget with the ARPA funds, if that's what the Commissioners and the judges desire is.
And alternatively, we can go to a second work session if those numbers are then known and then re-present back to the Commissioners.
Changes.
The changes.
And currently, this is Michael, we do have scheduled, I think, on Tuesday the seventeenth, a second budget work session if needed.
If I may, Judge Commissioners, next week, we also have time scheduled for Commissioners' Court to specifically discuss, separate from A R P, to also discuss the U M C budget during your meeting. Normally, the court discusses it. If you act on Tuesday about A R P funding, I don't know if you'll be ready to or not, but if you are, we could give that information to U M C and then we can move the U M C discussion to later in the week. I don't know if U M C would have enough time to bring us back a revised basic budget proposal, your main sheet? And then if the court wanted to act based on that revised sheet, you'd be able to do that at the end of next week? And you would not have to have your second follow-up meeting, joint board meeting, if you didn't, if you didn't want to? But if you still had questions, it would still be available for you.
Perfect.
I, this is Omar, I think I have the issue in terms of what the Board of Managers actually approves to go forward to the Commissioners Court. So if the Board of Managers has not had an opportunity to essentially say, and that's the budget that they want to go forward to the Commissioners Court, without the luxury of having another either work session or another meeting for the Board of Managers to have that vote to move forward.
So you're recommending we still keep the joint session so that we can have both the Commissioners approve the budget and the Board approve the budget?
And that would give time again for all plans to be laid out and then for another opportunity for the Board of Managers to meet at the August tenth meeting to further discuss.
They're not meeting on August yet, because of ARPA. We're not going to know what their decision is for the budget until, and our meeting's been on that date. So our Board would not have time to receive that and kind of then to update the budget.
Right. I mean, I think what you're saying, Omar, is that the county proceeds what they're doing, we'll work on a parallel track, but that when the county reaches the point to approve the budget, we still need the Board of Managers also there.
Right.
So that concurrently, they all are in agreement and approve the final budget.
Right, to move forward. But I think on the tenth, if the county makes their decision on the ARPA funding, and Betsy, I think you had mentioned that it was going to be in the morning, correct? That discussion on funding?
The, well, I can't, the court is only posted or is expected to meet until noon on Tuesday. So I'm expecting that they'll be able to cover the A R P funding and have a conversation. I don't know if they'll make a decision. For example, they may want to formally ask another entity or something of that nature or may not. I don't know what the court will act on on Tuesday, but that is the day we're scheduled to discuss A R P initially.
So with that, it is possible, I think, the guidance that we include, we have not posted for Tuesday yet, we can include items on our board management just to be prepared. And so if timing comes together, we can present that to our board.
Right. I just want to make sure that, you know, that the budget we presented is what we're presenting.
Right.
Unless we have a commitment in terms of the ARPA funds, which would then, and once we know that amount, we can modify our number and then, you know, work something that is amenable both to the Commissioners and to the Board of Managers.
And if we have those numbers by Tuesday's board meeting, by three P M. Tuesday, the Board can take action to vote to push the budget.
Well, we'll have to, maybe Betsy, what we'll do is we'll get with you and come up with some preliminary numbers because that's easier said than done. I mean, the county, you know, it's got to put the budget together and see what the potential revised one is. And my only request would be that, to change the budget under the assumption, it can't be an assumption, we need a known definite, so that we, that's the budget that gets approved that includes the ARPA funds in it.
Yeah, link to great, that money to come up with your final budget.
And Judge, on that note, we will have, we'll already have, I believe, a template contract for a A R P recipient agreement pending the amount so that it would be able to be processed quickly. I also wanted to note, it's of course the decision of the court, but because we don't have all of the A R P funding now, we have been proposing to do these in tranches, like we will be receiving the payment in tranches. So if U M C is requesting all thirty million or whatever amount the court determines is appropriate, normally that would be done and we would recommend that be done over two payments, but if it's something that would need to be done all upfront, the first year from the first payment, that will change the proposal that we're putting together for the court on the different options of where we would take funding from.
Betsy, the two payments would, we would just need a commitment of when those two payments would occur.
Thank you.
Let me get back to Commissioner Stow. Commissioner Stow, go ahead.
Yeah, thanks, Judge. You know, I think we're all on the same page when it comes to, you know, with the fact that we need to use, you know, A R P A funding to help us get out of this pandemic and provide folks with adequate healthcare. But with the budget that's being presented today, is it not correct that the assumptions that are being made are, and proposed here are assumptions that we will continue to have to deal with COVID going into the future and the needs that you all have going forward are included in this budget?
No. Our assumption was that COVID would be not to the extent that it is now. So in fact, you know, that is the unknown, is the herd immunity we've achieved going to help us have some stable control over the COVID exposure, especially with the Delta variant? Or is it going to be higher? We don't know. If the port of entries are open, then you're dealing with Mexican nationals that may or may not be vaccinated. Children with in-person school attendance and are now more susceptible to COVID could also increase that. We could have people from outside the county that may bring exposures and just simply with in-country travel. So, no, David, there was no assumption in the budget that COVID will remain at the same level. And that's. And that's, that's the unknown and that's the thing that we have to be prepared for that in the event that happens, then that may be a different, a different ballgame.
This was, this was Michael, this was the exact same discussion we had last year when we were approving the budget. Our numbers here in El Paso were relatively low. We had no idea what was going to happen three, four months later.
In October.
Yeah, and that we just had to react back then.
Yes, what we are trying to deal with though is stabilize the workforce.
Yeah.
Because with COVID in other areas, that's all over the place, so that's what we're trying to normalize as fast as we can.
So for example, we did have discussions related to will VSHS, if we get hit with a extreme COVID explosion, provide staffing support like they did the first, the, the first time we had this increase? And they said no, that they expect that the, the ARPA funds would be used for that at the local levels. And so that is different. CARES Act funding is not available anymore, so that would be different. So in, in some ways, we've got herd, we, we're getting closer to herd immunity and I think there's a, hopefully as a community, we're, we're better prepared than others throughout the country. But there's also a, a lot less commitment in terms of funding support should we have, you know, a high increase in COVID and the associated cost for that.
Okay. And so if, if, you know, the worst-case scenario does not occur, which is, you know, if, if we, if we don't have a surge and, you know, the, the ARP, if, if the county ends up, or, you know, hopefully we can get the city to partner with us and, you know, I'm going to continue to advocate for that because I think that they, they need to, to help. And we need to do everything that we can to push them to help us. But, you know, I, I, I think that, you know, Commissioner Robinson and the, and the judge, you know, made, made points about the future earlier. You know, and good points about the future earlier. And, you know, I, I'm, I'm also wondering about, whether, you know, what, what we're doing here is, is more about really trying to, to help deal with that issue or whether it is, we're, we're, we're more worried about our bond rating and, and being able to, to, to go out to bond. You know, I, I'd be much more comfortable with, with this, you know, even the county giving, you know, if, if we have to, you know, looking at how we could do the thirty million. If I knew that, that it was, you know, that, that some of this could be used towards or, you know, or, or put towards creating a, something like a, you know, a county, or, you know, public, public, public health district or a county health district. And I think we've talked a lot about the county's previous role in public health and, and how we might recover that for the future and, you know, I'm just wondering that, you know, if, if, if some, if, if this could be used as part of redeveloping, you know, our, 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 our county health district, or at least, you know, building that capacity for public health, you know, as opposed to, to, to bond ratings. I mean, are, are we planning on going out to bond in October or November or, you know, what's, what, what is the, I mean, what, what's the plan for that?
Right, so as you know, we know that we have capacity issues, we're holding as many as thirty or forty people in the E D at any one time. Certainly, there is a capacity constraints related to patient beds, especially critical care beds, surgeries, technology. Our hope would be that we would be able to visit that. But this thirty million ARP funds request is not tied to, to bond rating improvement. It's to cover expenses, a small fraction of the expenses I might add, that we've already incurred, you know, Commissioner. And when it comes to, you know, the, the things we're, we're looking at, there is no guarantee what's going to happen with COVID over the next few months, much less even the next few weeks. So the, the request for the ARPA fund request, we had originally asked for fifty million. And you all asked us to bring it down to thirty, I think you asked us to bring it down to eight. At the end of the day, we have about eighty to a hundred million dollars of exposure. And we're asking for thirty, that's only eighteen and a half percent of the total ARPA funds you received. Secondly, as it relates to, you know, the, the county health district, the county does have a health district, it is through the city. They pay fees to the city public health for coverage of not only El Paso County, but some of these surrounding areas. I know there's been thoughts about doing a county health district. These take funds to, to invest in in terms of the infrastructure and so forth. That, that thirty million, I think should be delinked from that because that is something, one, that requires a lot of discussion, agreement among the Commissioners and in their partnership with the city. And certainly requires commitment in terms of lab construction, the acquisition of the epidemiologists and all the other components you would need. I have no idea what something like that would cost versus working with the city to address any, any issues you think might exist. But I would not link it with the thirty million, because I don't think it would, it would cover it.
So I, I mean, the reason why I asked that question Jacob is because I, I heard Michael say that, you know, you all are going to have a meeting with, with the bonding agencies soon and that, that, you know, if, if you didn't have this money, it could, it could affect the bond rating. So, I mean, which is it, are we, are we talking about this, this is, this could affect the bond rating and we're worried about that or not? Because I'm, I'm hearing conflicting information, I mean, I just want to, I just want to clear that up. That's why I asked that question.
It's not conflicting, every year we have bond rating calls, every year, whether we've gone for a bond or not. I've been here, I think going on five years, we have not gone out for a bond in the five years that I've been here. Nonetheless, every year we have bond rating calls with the three different bond agencies as part of their routine. And so these are normally scheduled, yes, certainly, we've made it clear to you and our other Commissioners and Judge that we would like to request some, you know, assistance with a certificate of obligation to address some of the needs that the hospital system has right now, including the capacity issues, not only for UMC but for children's as well. But this meeting that's scheduled is strictly a surveillance interview that's done every year. We prepare presentations for Fitch, Moody's and S and P, so it is not tied to any specific request for, for bonds.
Yeah, so I mean, I just want to, I just want to make, you know, you know, I, I just don't think it's fair to tell us that, that, you know, if we don't give you all this, you know, the, the money, then, then, you know, we could possibly have a, a lower bond rating and, and that's something that's worrying us. But I, I, I mean, again, I, I, I think that, you know, if, if, if we're able to, to give you all some ARPA funding, I, I think that that's, that that would be great. I, I think we should, we should push the, the city to, to, to partner with us. You know, I, I, I still, you know, that when it comes to the argument about the tax rate, I understand that, that, you know, we, we may, next year, depending on what the situation is, have to, have to look at increasing a tax, the, the tax rate. But, you know, maybe next year we aren't going to be in this dire situation and people aren't going to be as, as economically challenged as they are this year. And so, I mean, that's, that's something that we may have to, 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 to deal with. And, I mean, I think we all should have, should understand that, right? But, I mean, this year has just been, I mean, you, you all have, we all know it's been probably the toughest year since I've been in office when it comes to, to finances for UMC or even dealing with, you know, the children's hospital issues, I mean, it's been, it's been very, very challenging and so, and, and very challenging also for, for, for all of the, the people in our community and the taxpayers. And so, I mean, it's, it's, it's important to understand that maybe in the future we might have to look at making up some lost ground. But I think that, you know, giving people some breathing room at this point in time is going to be very helpful.
Right, and, and Commissioner, we agree with you. When Michael said that, you know, when we meet with our ratings calls for typical surveillance, annual calls we have, that going in with a no-new tax revenue would put our net position in the negative, that would not help a bond rating. And we're not going for any new bonds, I mean, we, we wouldn't meet with bond rating agencies unless we had already committed and talked to our board as well as our Commissioners that we have a specific intent to do that. And you know, we've talked about the need to do that, but this bond agency meeting is the typical annual surveillance reviews we get. As far as the, the budget, the budget was not predicated on getting any ARPA funds. This is assuming we, we were getting nothing because we've not really heard a firm commitment that you're getting X dollar amount. So to your point, if the idea is, you know, we would like you to be at a no-new tax revenue budget, that's going to create a, a negative position for us that will be offset by the ARPA commitment, then we're willing to do that. But with full disclosure that next year, the, this discussion will, will, will still pop up, we've just postponed it or kicked the can down the road for, for a year. As long as everyone recognizes that and doesn't forget it for, for the next budget hearing for fiscal year twenty-three, then we're fine and willing to do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner, thank you Jacob. Betsy, did you have some comments or did, I don't know if you wanted to ask something?
Yes, sir, thank you. What I did want to ask was without, so without the tax rate as proposed, on slide forty, I'm sorry, slide fifty-four, the minimum wage, the living wage increase, that already is creating a future economic impact without a direct funding source. So it's incre, right now as proposed, well, this is without the, starting it earlier, it's creating a nine-point-five million dollar future cost impact without a direct additional revenue source for it. Because you'll see their year-end position is coming in level. So, so it's the, even with the proposed tax rate, it's not creating revenue to the future to pay for that increase. And if we start it earlier and we don't, and the court doesn't consider the tax rate as proposed, they're going to need to identify the starting it earlier, which I hear the court wanting to do, and the not improving the tax rate as proposed. What you will be doing next year is identifying approximately, I would say probably pretty close to eighteen million dollars in revenue to cover those costs. I just wanted to make sure that that, that that was clear.
Yeah, thank you, Betsy.
Yes, sir.
Insight.
Judge, may I ask a question?
Absolutely, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. So, so we know that we're already looking at that four-point-seven million, that would be the difference between the no-new revenue rate and using the current rate. So that would be part of the ARPA funding. And then, of course, we're, we're going to have the discussion about the, the, the living wage increase soon, some of it sooner, as opposed to all of it later. And that's the three to five million, so those amounts where we already know might come from the ARPA funds. So the other, it's like thirty million that's been discussed is that, would that be made up of the salary expenses for, for the nursing staff? Would that also include like the CMS recruitment payments? Is there a way that we could know what those, for example, again, the thirty million that we've been discussing would go specifically towards?
The, we have, I think we provided over a hundred million in, in exposure in terms of, you know, some of these, you know, contract labor, CMS prepayment and so forth. We could break it down, but you could almost choose anything off of that list that, you know, the thirty million won't, won't cover. And so we can look at providing at least, here's what we intend to use it for. And you're right, if it's thirty million ARPA funds to cover at least some portion of the hole that, that's created with these changes going on. Additionally, you know, the, if we stay at the no-new tax revenue, there's the additional four-point-seven million. And then if you decide, you know, let's advance one-dollar increase in, say, January or March and the other one in July, here's that incremental increase. To Betsy's point, that would have to come from the ARPA funds or we will be in a negative position. And again, as I mentioned before, this is a, an ongoing expense that'll happen every year, will build up every year. And so this only covers fiscal year twenty-two, fiscal year twenty-three on forward, those increases will hit us with no ARPA funds to offset. And we just want to be clear about that.
But I thought we had said we could split it up into two payments, so wouldn't one payment be in this fiscal year and then the other payment in the next fiscal year? I understand the point about kicking it down the road, I, I understand that. But I guess I'm, I'm trying, I'm optimistic like Commissioner Stout that we'll be as a community, as taxpayers, in a better place in two years as opposed to right now, when we know that so many people are really, really still struggling. So that's, so I do understand that, I understand that completely, that this is a discussion that's not going to be, this money isn't going to solve future discussion.
Right, and so, and to your point, we know we're looking at, you know, we would just need to know, you know, dates of the, you know, the, the two, you know, payments, if you will, of transfers of the ARPA funds. And the, you know, we need to calculate what that ARPA fund amount would be, you know, the thirty million plus the no-new tax difference from the leaving it at the same rate, plus advancing one-dollar minimum wage earlier versus two at, at one time. And we'll work with Betsy and our, our fiscal team and her fiscal team with that, so that by Tuesday you'll know what that, that ask will be. And we will assume that those transfers will occur over, you know, two payments over the next fiscal year.
Or the other question that just came up, this is Michael, is that whether is it, is it two payments, one in fiscal twenty-two and another in fiscal twenty-three? Or two payments in fiscal twenty?
No, it would be two payments in twenty-two.
Right, but I think I just heard, was it Commissioner's say that it could be spread out over two years?
Oh, no, I, yeah, our hope was that, that, if the two payments, if the two tranches would occur in the same fiscal year.
That was my question, that, thank you, Michael.
But our hope is, as you know, Commissioner and, and Betsy, is that the two tranches that would, would occur, the two payments from the, the two tranches, one from each tranche would occur in fiscal year twenty-two.
That's a question, Betsy?
So I would, what I would recommend, I would recommend that the county, if, if we put into the agreement that it would be contingent upon the receipt of the second tranche, I don't, in the first tranche, we, we received direct payment. I don't know that we'll receive direct payment in the second tranche. And there has been conversations at the federal level about that second payment. So until we have the second payment, I don't think we should, like, I, I think we would have to be careful in how we put that into the language. And of course, it's a pleasure of the court, but if, I, I would, my recommendation would be that that be not guaranteed in the first fiscal year. And that it be contingent upon the receipt of the second payment.
So that would change the discussion we've been having, unless we, it would be two tranches, tranches for fiscal year twenty-two and out of your first ARPA fund that you have, you know, paid half, but reserve the other half so that it, it gets paid out of the first tranche in fiscal year twenty-two. Otherwise, the budget does change, it's less than.
Well, as long as they paid at least your gap.
We, we'll need to review those numbers. And that was my concern, Betsy, is go from, you know, thirty-five million now to, well, maybe it's half and maybe the next one comes next year, contingent on us getting it, and if you don't get it, then, you know, that, that, that's the concern. I think I need, you know, we need more definitive commitment of just to make sure that we're covering what we need to cover. But we can work together with you so that for your next Tuesday meeting, we have sort of. But we can work together with you so that for your next Tuesday meeting, we have sort of an outline of what, what we need to provide.
Betsy, any further questions?
So I've got a question, sir. Are you a?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Are y'all talking about like doing different tranches? I mean, just, I mean, basically committing the whole 30 million dollars or whatever and then just, you know, doing different tranches and it's, and it's all going to go in? Or are you talking about saying, okay, we'll, we'll give, you know, 15 million dollars in one tranche and then we'll see over the next six months how things are actually going with COVID and how things are going with the hospital and that they actually are going to end up needing the other 15 million? And then we make a decision after that to, to take the other 15 million and dedicate it and, and send it to them? I'm confused on what, what the proposal there is.
No, because I think what Jacob just said is that it's money that, it's not that things change. These are things that they've already incurred, right, Jacob? It's not like we're, if things change, it'll be better. I mean, you, you guys are in the whole 80 million. It's not going to be based on what happens or doesn't happen in the future. Am I correct in that?
That's correct. That's what already has occurred. So it's not a conditional, what if something happens with COVID, we'll then do the second tranche. The commitment will be for the, the 30 million plus the gap between the no new tax and the leaving it at the current rate. And, you know, basically y'all are asking, can we do it in two payments? Yes. Then the question came, well, can we do it over two years? We prefer in the fiscal year '22.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Yeah. I guess, I mean, I'm still, I'm still kind of hung up on the, on the fact that the, the budget wasn't created with, with, with any assumptions of future COVID expenditures taking place. What would, what would have happened if we didn't have the ARPA funding? How would you have created a budget then? I mean, I'm still a little, I mean.
Keep in mind that the, keep in mind that ARP funding was also provided to cities and counties to address COVID. That's what it was for. So we do have COVID funds. We have no control over those funds. The county has control over those funds. But the Texas Division for Emergency Managers made clear that those funds that the cities and counties have received in the state of Texas are to address primarily any COVID issues. So the funds are there, David. Now, had they not, you know, much like when we first saw, you know, COVID hit, there were no plans or budgeting for it. Federal government, state government, everybody stepped in and created funds to address staffing and testing and vaccines and so forth. So, you know, the, we, the hospital did not get COVID funds for fiscal year '22. The county and the cities throughout Texas did.
Right.
So I know sometimes the feeling is, well, ARPA funds are for us to do a number of things. One of the primary purposes of it is to address COVID. So to your point, yeah, there's funds. UMC has no control of them. If something had happened with COVID and it got really worse, the 30 million we're requesting is for past expenses. It's not for future expenses conditioned on whether COVID gets better or worse. So if it got worse, then yes, I think the, the governor and the, the feds would expect that some of this ARPA funds that are there that you have would be used to supplement any unknown need that may occur with COVID.
And just to clarify, the ARP funds cannot be used for old past expenses. They have to be expenses incurred since March of 2021. Additionally, and I do believe there are, I want to be clear, I do believe there are areas where allow, what UMC is requesting is under the allowable uses. But the allowable uses do, there's four primary allowable uses for counties under the ARP funds, which is respond to or mitigate the public health emergency with respect to COVID-19 or its negative economic impacts. And so UMC has had some negative economic impacts from COVID-19. So that is the category it would, it would qualify under. It not, does not necessarily have to tie specifically back to the CMS money that was fronted that they will now be paying back over time or, but, but it is, just, just as we get into the semantics, that's something we can work out in the contract.
Agreed.
Thank you, Betsy. Do we have any further discussion? Betsy, anything?
No, sir.
I just want to say thank you for the, for the, for the presentation and thank you for the discussion. I think it was a good discussion. And, and I appreciate as well all of the things that you're putting into the budget that, that, that are going to, that are going to help your employees and, and, and help keep our, our community healthy. So, you know, I just want to thank you all for your, for the, for all the work that you, that you do. Don't take my, my questioning and, and my, you know, my curiosity as to, to what's going on is, is negative. I think that, you know, you all do a great job and you, you really stepped up during the pandemic to take care of vaccinations and, and many other things when, you know, it wasn't, wasn't really your, you know, you didn't have to. And so, you know, I really appreciate all the work that you all have done throughout the pandemic, both at UMC and at Children's Hospital.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
For us, you're a great partner.
We appreciate you saying that.
We did lend you, Commissioner, for a while so we could really understand. If anybody understands the insight of what happens, it's Commissioner, so you have a great advocate. Thank you. Anything else back to?
I think, Betsy, are we then left with, we're going to work with you on coming up with the numbers and then, and then potentially depending on the outcome of Tuesday, the Commissioner's Court meeting, have a modified budget that would include the ARPA funds that we would then take back to the Board for consideration.
Yes, sir. And I believe, I believe, Judge, this would conclude, I believe, UMC's meeting, but Commissioner's Court does have some additional items on their agenda.
Absolutely, we sure do. But I don't know if Caesar you would, or I guess, Henry, you would close out your meeting?
Right. We, we do have the tax rate, Judge, as it pertains to the hospital district, if they want to sit in on this part as well.
Yes.
The, the, the Tax Assessor Collector's presentation.
This is Omar. Caesar?
Yeah. If I can just, if I can just make a comment, I think that we've got, we've got a few members that need to drop off. And so we're going to lose quorum here pretty soon. So I think from our perspective, it probably would be wise to adjourn.
Right. But for, for the record, we need to take, actually make the record as no action on our items one and two.
Chairman, Colonel, may I take care of that?
Yeah, please, Jennifer.
So based on the discussion this afternoon in our joint budget work session with El Paso County Commissioners, please note for the record that there will be no action taken on either Agenda Item Number One or Agenda Item Number Two. And with your permission, Mr. Chairman, if we may adjourn on our side?
Yes, if I could have a motion, please adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
If I can have a second, please?
Second.
I second. Thank you. Then we have a first, that was Dr. Bennett. We have a second, Ms. Karen Dyke. Thank you. The Board of Managers and El Paso County Commissioners' Joint Budget Work Session for UMC is officially adjourned and the time is 4:01 PM. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much and we'll see y'all next week.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. We will take no action on item number five for the Commissioner's Court. Moving on to item number six, accept the 2021 no new revenue and voter approval tax rate calculations for the El Paso County Hospital District. No new tax revenue rate, .258145 per $100 of value. Voter approval rate, 0.273705 per $100 of value.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Judge, I'm Angela Brinkley. I'm here on behalf of Ruben Gonzalez, your county tax assessor collector. He has asked me to send his regards. He is unable to attend this afternoon's meeting due to a recent death in the family. However, he's entrusted me to relay these rate calculations on his behalf. So with that, thank you for bringing that up. The presentation is the 2021 no new revenue and voter approval tax rate presentation. Now the next slide, please. Briefly, just a quick overview of the purpose of truth in taxation is to really overall increase transparency in the rate adoption process. So taxpayers are aware of tax rate proposals and that gives them the ability to limit tax increases by their taxing entities. In addition, last year during the '86 legislature, as you're aware, the limit allowed for increase was reduced from 8% to 3.5% for most entities. One of the, some of the principles for truth in taxation are, one, they have the right to know about their increases in appraised values and the estimated taxes they could anticipate paying in the upcoming year. That water taxing units other than water districts must calculate the NNR or the effective tax rate and the voter approval rate each year before adopting a current tax rate. Those notices must be published about a public hearing or a meeting now to adopt a tax rate. So that the actual adoption process as far as, as far as notification has been simplified somewhat. And if a tax rate, of course, adopts, if a taxing unit adopts a rate that exceeds the voter approval rate, that voters may limit the rate through a rollback election petition. So if we go to the next slide, please, we'll look at the definitions of what the rates are. Last year, the legislature also changed the names of the rates. As you're well aware, the no new revenue rate is, is the, what was once known as the effective tax rate. The definition has not changed. It is still the tax rate that would generate about the same amount of revenue a unit, taxing it received in the year prior on property tax, the same property being taxed in both years. And so there's an inverse relationship between values and rates. If values go up, the rates tend, the no new revenue rate will decrease. And then the voter approval rate was once known as the rollback tax rate. And that is, as last year again, is a calculated maximum rate allowed by law without voter approval. With that being said, can you go to the next slide, please? So at this point, I'd like to present the El Paso County Hospital District 2021 tax rates per $100 of property value. The 2021 no new revenue tax rate is calculated at 0.258145 per $100 of value. The 2021 voter approval tax rate is calculated to be 0.273705 per $100 of tax value. And we've included the current tax, last year's adopted tax rate for year 2020, for your information, and that was at 0.267747. Next slide, please. Okay. Are there any questions about these rates as calculated so far? Okay. Then with that, we ask that you accept the rates as calculated, the 2021 no new revenue rate and voter approval tax rate calculations for El Paso County Hospital District as stated.
Angela, if I may just add?
Yes.
So just to be clear, this is just accepting the rates. This is not setting your rates. I like to make that clear to the public. We always have questions following this meeting every year.
Yes.
So this is just accepting what the calculations are. You will not set your rate until a later date.
That's correct. We don't, we do not set the rate. Commissioner's Court will set the rate, but this is essentially, some people consider this the ceiling and the floor of the range of the rates that can be accepted without requiring a voter approval election.
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Ogilvy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samanigo?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number seven, accept the 2000, I believe that this should be a correction, it should be, accept the 2021 no new revenue and voter approval tax rate calculations for El Paso County. No, no new revenue rate, 0.470181 per $100. Voter approval rate, 0.482502 per $100.
Thank you, Angela Brinkley, again, for the county tax assessor collector. We're here to present the 2021 tax rates for $100 property value for the county of El Paso. So the 2021 no new revenue tax rate was calculated to be 0.470181. 2021 voter approval tax rate was 0.482502 per $100 worth of valuation. And the 2020 adopted tax rate, for your information, was 0.488997. Next slide, please. Thank you. So we're asking that you accept the 2021 no new revenue rate and voter approval tax rate calculations for El Paso County as calculated.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Ogilvy?
Aye.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
I'm sorry. Aye.
Thank you, sir. Judge Samanigo?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. As much, I would like to extend a quick thank you to everybody in our auditors, our county audit department. They were instrumental in helping with the verification process and they were really very helpful during this year, was, was, had some particular challenges, but we were able to overcome them. And I do want to express my, our sincere thanks and gratitude to our auditors. Thank you so much.
Thank you for saying Angela and please our condolences and our best wishes for Mr. Gonzalez.
Great, thank you. I'll relay that to him. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela.
Thank you.
Judge, at this time, would you like to recess into executive session to take up items eight and nine?
That is correct. Thank you.
Okay. At this time, Commissioner's Court will recess into executive session to discuss items eight and nine pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551.071. Commissioner's Court will reconvene to take official action.
Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce with 72% of our population being bilingual. We stay competitive among other large U.S. cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art hierarchy- Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the U.S.-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers seventy-four bachelors, seventy-four masters, and twenty-two doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality with plenty of outdoor recreation options. It's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name. El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Most of us have pets, and we know that we have to take care of them and give them a home with love. But when our resources are not enough, we need to find out a better life for them. Fortunately, here in El Paso, the Animal Welfare Department is here to help. Every morning, the officers of the El Paso County Animal Welfare Department get into their trucks and set off for different parts of the county to help citizens with their pets.
My main job is to protect, capture, and care for animals, educate the community. We do everything from our trucks, we do foster transportations, we do adoptions, we do microchipping.
El Paso County is one of the largest counties in the state of Texas, and its Animal Welfare Department has only eight officers to cover all the land outside the city.
The county is very big in terrain, it's bigger than the city actually, but the houses are kind of sporadic, it's a lot of terrain to cover.
Today's mission is to collect some puppies and a little pig on the outskirts of the county. From a man who no longer has enough resources to support them. In 2020, the Animal Welfare Department rescued a total of 1,769 animals, of which 231 were returned to their owners and 418 were adopted. After giving the men information about the spay and neuter services, Erickto takes the puppies and the little pig to a shelter on the other side of the county, where they will find a family for them.
The name of the rescue here is Almost Home, and it's a big foster affiliate of ours. They help us a lot with our transition, so these dogs own, set food at the shelter at the animal services.
After leaving the animals in good hands, Erickto drives away to a new mission.
El Paso goes by many names: Sun City, 915. We are known for history, culture, food, and art. In the early 1900s, development and commerce in El Paso revolved around mining and trade. The nationally recognized mission trails are just one example of the many historic sites that portray our region's rich indigenous and colonial history. Since then, El Paso has evolved, and so has its people. We take great pride in nourishing a skilled and capable workforce. With 72% of our population being bilingual, we stay competitive among other large US cities. The region's border location boasts a major trade port. It allows competitive local manufacturers to produce at maximum capacity. Fleet systems are capable of worldwide distribution of parts and products. Our state-of-the-art higher education systems are nationally recognized. The Texas Tech University Health Sciences Center, El Paso, the nation's first comprehensive health sciences institution on the US-Mexico border, provides students the opportunities to become doctors, nurses, and researchers. The University of Texas at El Paso offers 74 bachelors, 74 masters, and 22 doctoral programs. Local government agencies and other economic development organizations help industries become established and expand in our community. The county of El Paso is great for business. But we also keep true to our southern hospitality. With plenty of outdoor recreation options, it's easy to keep active in El Paso. We are constantly looking for new industries interested in expansion. We want to offer our help and support in the process. No matter the name, El Paso is proud, strong, progressive. We are El Paso. Come see what we can do together.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Commissioners, Court has reconvened into special open session. We are on item number eight, or excuse me, item number 10 from the addendums to the agenda. Item number 10, regular session, discuss and take appropriate action regarding Governor Abbott's Executive Order Number 37.
Good afternoon, County Judge, Commissioners, Judge Untarek, or County Attorney. I am asking the Court at this time for a motion directing the County Attorney's Office to take legal action as directed in executive session to oppose G-837 in connection with the pending federal litigation.
So moved.
Commissioner Robinson.
Aye.
Judge Samanio.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that completes all the items on our agenda today, Judge.
Okay, well, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, as we're going into the weekend. Wish you all a great weekend and continue the random acts of kindness as we move forward. Let's not, let's use the healing garden to propel us forward, and it's not something that ended on that day. So thank you very much for continuing the healing and the unity as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This concludes today's meeting at 4:54 PM.